Oh, two. I will go through our regular opening procedures, starting with pledge of allegiance. Keep joining me. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the Constitution of which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda for this evening's meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Reviewing our norms, I'll read the first section. The Kent School Board highly values community engagement and welcomes participation in our board meetings. If you choose to speak, we urge you to treat each other with empathy, kindness, grace, respect, and most importantly, to assume goodwill with each other. Finally, in the interest of allowing anyone who wishes to be heard the opportunity to do so, we ask you to adhere to the speaking time designations and speak only once on any given topic. Focus on district goals.
Yes, we will be addressing our three core areas around academic achievement, finance, and personal.
Sarah, report from closed session.
Yes, we have one matter to report out. In closed session, by a vote of five to zero, the board took action to non-reelect employee ID number 102524 effective June 30, 2022. The board voted as follows. Trustee Goldbacher. I need your vote.
Oh, not real.
Hi, okay. Trustee McPhail Schreger.
Aye.
Trustee Sue.
Aye.
Trustee Killingsworth.
Aye.
Trustee Riedel.
Aye.
That concludes the report from closed session.
Thank you. For public comments, is there anyone desiring to address the board on matters not on tonight's agenda? No? Okay, moving on to our consent items. Meeting minutes, 1A, action. Consider the approval of meeting minutes from the regular board meeting on February 8, 2022? Oh, we're going to do the whole consent items as a block. Looking for a motion to approve the consent items in H?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent items adopted as presented. I would like to take a minute to have a recognition for the San Francisco German Band. I think we have some representatives here tonight.
Hello, my name is Walter Taylor. I'm president of the Deutsche Lübeck Frayn San Francisco, which is also known as the San Francisco German Band. And I'm here with Adrian Quicks, our conductor, and Mike Martinez, our assistant conductor, who is also music director here at the Kent Middle School. And we're here to thank you and show our appreciation for allowing us to rehearse outdoors at the Kent Middle School during the summer. The Deutsche Lübeck Frayn has been playing continuously in the Bay Area since 1938, until early 2020, when we couldn't play because of the pandemic. During the pandemic, we stayed active with Zoom, and we did a few performances on Zoom together. But finally, when, and we're, by the way, about 30 people. And we perform, we're nonprofit. We perform in the community typically about 15 or 20 times a year at community events. And so in the summer of 2021, it appeared that it would be safe for us to start rehearsing together, but we needed an outdoor space. And through your generosity, we were able to start meeting every Sunday morning and rehearse. And now we are ready to go. We're again rehearsing in our indoor space in San Francisco. We just really wanted to show our appreciation for helping us keep our thing up to date. Yeah, we have a plaque that we created and we're going to give to you. And the plaque says, "This plaque is presented to the Kent Middle School District by the Deutsche Lübeck Frayn San Francisco German Band, with thanks and appreciation for allowing us to rehearse outdoors at the Kent Middle School during the COVID pandemic."
Thank you. Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Glad we were able to be supportive. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to the educational showcase, we have the Kent Little School Spanish group.
So I'm going to get your PowerPoint up. Give me one second and also share this screen with our participants over Zoom. So. Okay, one more second.
Well, I'm just going to tell you, buenos dias, como estan?
Yes, gracias.
So communication is at the heart of second language study. And whether the communication takes place face-to-face or in writing or across centuries through the reading of literature. The ability to use language in a variety of culturally appropriate communicating tasks is the most basic goal of most learners. And communication is used in a variety of ways. The approach taken by the Foreign Language Standards Task Force identifies three modes of communication that link language and culture. The smartest goal for the Spanish department at Kent this year focuses on communication. It is to help students feel comfortable and competent, not only in reading and writing, but most importantly, in speaking. Our goal is for students to confront everyday conversations comfortably. So we use three modes of communication. The interpersonal, where students negotiate meaning in spoken or written conversation to share information, reactions, feelings, and opinions. And the way we do this in class is through visuals, playing games. They have created their own bingo cards, so we play those games. And there's guided activities, and we have oral pair activities as well. Then the second goal is interpretive, where students understand and interpret and analyze what is heard, read, or viewed on a variety of topics. And the third goal is presentational. And students present information, concepts, and ideas to inform, explain, persuade, narrate on a variety of topics using appropriate media and adapting to various audiences of listeners, of readers, or viewers. So tonight, you're going to be able to appreciate some of the activities that students have done in class, in seventh grade and in eighth grade. Unfortunately, Ms. Claudia Delicato's not here, but there were a couple of students who were going to show up, but I don't see them yet. They didn't sign away. They didn't participate, they're on the way. Okay, but I have two seventh grade students. So Grayden was one of these students, and he's a seventh grader. And they created a poster to describe themselves and to describe their family in licensees and slides. So he was going to present this in person, but I don't see him here yet. So maybe we can move to the second slide, which is another seventh grade student. Her name is Sabine Cam. And I understand that she just came from Syria, and she does fantastic in Spanish. She did a great poster. She was so happy. But I don't see her. So we're going to move forward. So we're going to move on with Ashley Ball. She's not take over, so we can go to this third slide.
Buenos dias, me llamo Ashley Ball. Tengo trece años y en octavo grado. Este es poeta de un poeta para la casa en Viento. La casa está en la avenida de la Cantona. Y cuesta cinco millones de dólares. En la planta baja hay cocina moderna, comida sava, dos baños y dos colores. En el primer piso, tres dormitorios y tres baños. También hay cuatro de lago. En el segundo piso, hay dormitorios más grande y con amplio plan. También, en la planta baja, los ventonas son grandes y cristal. En el primer piso, la frama está en los dormitorios. En el segundo piso, el graje separado para dos coches. Gracias.
And Brayden's here.
The students studied the vocabulary that had to do with the house, so they just did a flyer for a house for sale.
Brayden's here.
Brayden.
And that's the first slide. So this is the presentation I did during, I did it about two months ago. And my teacher, Claudia, gave us an option to do either a poster or a slideshow, and I chose to do a poster, and that's a picture. She needs about a few weeks to do it, and I just presented it how I did it in class. Hola, me llamo Brayden. Yo soy un chico inteligente e interesante, social y activo. Mis padres son buenos, sanosos y simpáticos. También mi mamá le gusta perosito. Pero es, es peresoso, es inteligente, pero también es loco e interesante. También, a Claudia le gusta rostro de perro. Mi hermano, tengo un hermano de poquita, holososo, y de poquita. También le gusta jugar con los niños. Mi amigo Alex es un chico simpático, holososo, y es de humor. También le gusta jugar a la diversión. Gracias por tu apoyo. I believe Sabine is here. So we had, so because the purpose is actually to communicate. Now, what some students were doing were wanting to memorize what they were going to say. And I am trying to have a little bit of memorizing. I just gave them a, I just gave them a blueprint. They had to figure out a dialogue about somebody who had bought a house. Compramos una casa en la ciudad. So I gave it to them on a Monday, and they worked on it a little bit. I said, "Go memorize," and this was their tomorrow. And this is what they get. Hola, me llamo Skyra, no estoy en la ciudad.
To, yeah. Uh, Skyra, possible. She means by the door.
Onda, ¿cómo estás?
Estoy bien.
Tengo malas noticias. Mi padre compró una casa nueva en la ciudad.
Está lejos de mi casa. Pues, ¿cómo es la casa?
Es grande, pero es vieja. Hay cinco dormitorios y veinte baños.
Hay muchos baños y dormitorios. Tú también, solo tiene cuatro personas y un perro. Pues, pues, ¿cuántos pisos hay?
Hay todo un piso. También, tengo paredes rosadas en mi dormitorio. En la cocina, las paredes son amarillas.
Los colores son muy feos. Creo que las paredes blancas son mejores que las paredes amarillas y rosadas.
También, hay una piscina. Puedes nadar conmigo este fin de semana.
No me gusta nadar. Tu casa nueva tiene toda. Hay una cocina, una vista maravillosa, de ciudad, una sala de vivienda.
Yo sé. También hay dos salas. Son muy cómodas. Tienen tres tiendas y tres televisores. Nuestro jardín es muy verde y perfecto para mi perro.
Tu perro es muy feo y sucio.
Mi perro es muy bonito. Tú eres una amiga. No necesito a ti. Solo necesito mi perro y mis veinte baños.
Hola, soy Jackson. Estoy en el octavo grado y voy a la escuela intermedia aquí.
Hola, me llamo Fami. Tengo catorce años. Voy a la escuela intermedia aquí.
So basically, we had the prompts of going to the mall and basically going to the mall together. It's about the same.
Que paso, ma?
Que paso. Qué me va a hacer?
Yo quiero ir al centro comercial. Yo necesito unos pantalones nuevos.
Sí, a mí también, pero yo quiero zapatos nuevos, porque estos zapatos son muy sucios.
Sí. Debemos ir a la zapatería y la tienda de ropa, pero yo tengo mucha hambre.
Sí, a mí también. ¿Qué te quieres comer?
Ah, quiero comer una hamburguesa.
Ya, todo.
Debemos ir al restaurante de hamburguesas.
Sí.
Vamos.
Hola, me llamo Yo. Tengo catorce años. Estoy en la escuela.
Hola, me llamo Vince. Tengo catorce años. Estoy en la escuela.
So we just made a dialogue about what we, making plans about shopping and what we were going to do that day.
Hola, ¿quieres irte a comprar conmigo? Te puedo ir a la tienda de Nike.
Sí, ¿cuándo vamos a comprar?
A la segunda semana.
¿Qué necesitas comprar?
Necesito comprar unos zapatos de banda stuff. ¿Y tú?
No quiero comprar ropa nueva, como una sudadera o unos pantalones. Me gustaría poner mis huesos.
Sí, vamos a en su parada. Compro un sandwich de hamburguesa. ¿Y tú?
Yo no sé. Quizás un burrito.
Es delicioso. Debemos venir este antes de mi casa.
Bueno, nos vemos entonces.
hasta luego.
Hola, me llamo Brilla. Y soy en la escuela.
Hola, me llamo Miral. También soy en la escuela.
Absolutely, go for it.
Hola, ¿cómo estás? Soy muy nada. Es un día sin ver de ser esta mañana, y no tengo un regalo. ¿Qué piensas comprar?
Nada. No me voy a un regalo, está, era sorry, pero mis caldos están bien.
Debo comprar algo. Voy contigo al centro comercial esta tarde para buscar un regalo. Voy contigo, pero no compro un regalo. ¿Por qué? El año pasado, para mi cumpleaños, ella compró un regalo muy burrito. Los calzones tienen muy feos. Uf. Podemos ir a la tienda de ropa para buscar una gorra muy simple. Espero que no. Tal vez un libro de la librería? No, no. ¿Quieres un lápiz para tienda de descuentos?
Sí, solo porque son baratos.
Tengo que ir a mi casa, porque no tengo dinero. ¿Te ves al centro comercial?
Te veo a las cuatro.
Primero, tía. Hola, bien, bien. ¿Cuántos años? ¿Con quién tienes que comprar? Compre un regalo muy especial.
¿Un zafarrá?
Un lápiz. Un lápiz.
Ah, so there's a, there's a, there's a video of the fashion show. Students, there is vocabulary that have to do. So Jack, Jack is presenting this.
Hola, soy Jack Ball. Y soy escribiante de la escuela. Este es un video del desfile de modas de la escuela. Yo tomo la clase de periodismo y tomé un video de las presentaciones. Este video es un ejemplo de algunas de ellas. Este video fue transmitido la semana pasada.
Buenos días. Y bienvenidos a las noticias de Kent Falcon de hoy. Miércoles 2 de febrero de 2022. Soy Ash.
Soy Ash.
Show, jugar videojuegos. No me gusta nada practicar deportes.
Mi clase favorita es de clase de matemáticas.
Hola, somos un equipo de esquí.
Hola, y bienvenidos a nuestro desquicio.
Tengo una camiseta amarilla, ramilla, y llevo unos pantalones cortos, blancos y rojos.
Yes.
Soy alto y paciente. Me gusta levantar pasas.
Llevo unos zapatos azules oscuros que son perfectos para la escuela. También llevo unos pantalones azules, azules, son muy cómodas.
Me gusta pasar tiempo con mis amigos y correr.
Yo llevo una sudadera de Gucci azul. Y pantalones de Versace. Y zapatos de Chanel.
My favorite thing about the Spanish project was like coming, taking part with my friends and making like a fun outfit to wear on the fashion show.
My favorite part of the Spanish project was making a fun outfit.
My favorite part of the project was choosing a cover.
My favorite part of the project was working with my friends and making our poster.
My favorite part of the project was making a poster and like putting out pictures to put on us.
What was your collection?
Okay, so we did like a winter kind of like fall theme, if that makes sense. It was kind of like a casual thing that we did where it was like orangey-red colors. And we wore like sweaters and then like, I don't know, jeans. It was just a comfy outfit.
What was your collection?
Our collection was clothes of color. And basically, we just like, all, like all, our group dressed up as like different colors of the rainbow.
So I chose the fashion show because I wanted the students to do something different, something fun. And I could see that they could communicate and they could tell people, talk in Spanish, because that's the reason that you're learning the language, to actually be able to communicate with other people.
So I thought it was great, you have Jack's idea, and wanted to videotape and to show it to the class. And also, I just wanted to set it up on Wednesday, when they're starting the broadcast, they're starting to do it in Spanish. My two important classes. And my, my, my other school, my seventh grade student, Sabine, and.
Ah, hola, me llamo Sabine. Yo tengo trece años y soy estudiante de Kent de séptimo grado. Yo soy estudiosa, ordenada, paciente y graciosa. Me gusta mucho jugar al tenis y escuchar música. No soy seria e impaciente. Me gusta mucho pasar tiempo con mis amigos y también hablar con mis amigos. Mi hermana Lina es una chica muy impaciente, talentosa, trabajadora e inteligente. Me gusta mucho jugar videojuegos con mi hermana. A ella le gusta ordenar, cocinar, hablar por teléfono y escuchar música sola. Mi madre es una persona simpática, buena, sociable y paciente. Me gusta mucho hablar con mi madre. A ella le gusta ver la tele y cantar. Mi madre no es seria cuando juega al tenis con mi familia. Mi padre es serio, ordenado, impaciente e inteligente. Me gusta mucho cocinar con mi padre. A ella le gusta trabajar y leer. Mi padre no es sociable. Le gusta estar sola. Gracias.
This is what we do. You know what we do, and you're always welcome to come anytime to the class to see what happens in the class. Do you have any questions?
I would like to just make a comment. First and foremost, thank you, students, for your presentations. And thank you for bringing to life Spanish for us here in the boardroom today. What I found really compelling for me as the sprinter here is to see how relevant you made learning for the kids, that they were connecting to what they were learning, having the opportunity to talk with one another and come up with those scenarios. And so, thank you for that as our teacher, and thank you parents for being here and bringing your children. You guys did a fabulous job.
Thank you. And I thank the students for doing all this work.
Great, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know, to get them excited.
It's a hard act to follow. I'm looking at Warren, he's like, oh, come on.
Now, we're moving on to our employer organization reports. And we have, Warren, you can present in Spanish, I hope.
Amazing, those children are in Rosa's program. This is amazing.
Amazing, I know.
Wow, all right, so I hope you like my medical. Good evening, everyone. Good to see you all. Great to be here in the boardroom. Yeah, feels like it's been a long time, because it's been a long time.
Yeah.
Many of us. Many of us have next Monday on our minds as we prepare to transition our two schools to strongly encourage masks but not requiring students to wear them in our classrooms. March fourteenth is going to be quite a day. Monday will be Pi Day for one. As a math teacher, I can say that if you don't know what Pi Day is, you need to have a class. Monday will also be the beginning of the third trimester of our school year together, the first daylight savings school day of the new year. And spring math testing for hundreds of our students among other things. I'm also tracking the weather because it might rain. Monday will also represent the passage of two full years, one day, since the Friday we sent our students home from school. For what most of us expected would be a short term quarantine, for lack of a better word. A hiatus that turned into something quite a bit more than just a few weeks long. Friday, March thirteenth, twenty twenty. And what a long strange trip it's been these past two years. I think about the music of the universe. To me, it's a full film harmonic orchestra accompanied by a syncopated snare drum. It's glorious and full in its sounds and textures, but it's got this really messed up irrational jerk in the back row that keeps reminding us that it's near impossible to tap our toes or snap our fingers to any predictable beat. Grasping the rhythm, the rhyme, the reason of these past two years has seemed much less fast. These past two years may best be reviewed many years from now because we're still really in the same timeline as March thirteenth, twenty twenty. Regarding the COVID pandemic, volatile global events, and of course, our own personal and professional lives. It can be really hard to put into words what we continue to live and navigate every single day in this present. What we do know though is that we've all confronted many challenges. It's been a testament to our students' resilience and positive natures that roughly a thousand kids from kindergarten to eighth grade have continued to learn, grow, and in most cases thrive despite unexpected interruptions and reasons for much anxiety and the cosmos's syncopated rhythms of the last two years. It's also important to acknowledge the incredible efforts of our dedicated leadership. Who since March thirteenth, twenty twenty, have worked incredibly hard with whatever resources and help they had on hand to prepare and uphold the best, safest, most successful learning and teaching environments that could be provided for our students and staff in the context of a global pandemic. Our Kentfield teachers have pivoted along with our students and administration, first in providing immediate remote instruction two years ago. Then pivoting to hybrid instruction the next fall and pivoting again to almost a hundred percent full in seat instruction almost exactly one year ago now. Our students have always been our priority. They've always deserved a safe, supportive learning environment. They give responsiveness to their learning styles, their social emotional well-being, and of course, their physical well-being. We've always tried to do what is best for our students. So Monday, March fourteenth brings us to yet another pivot point along this long strange trip. In some ways, we don't know what we don't know about Monday. We're going to do our best to anticipate both the intended and unintended consequences of no longer compelling our students and adults to wear masks in our classrooms after such a long time of being so careful and so purposeful. Monday morning will surely bring much relief to some in our school community and it will likely bring anxiety to some in our community as well. Kentfield teachers and paraprofessionals and our administration will be in our classrooms at the morning bell to welcome every single one of our students to the start of a brand new day. Ready to be responsive, supportive, nurturing, and to help all of our student community feel seen and be heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Consistency plays a valuable role in a successful education system. Earlier this year, as is common practice in many school districts, our educators were to review the employee seniority list. Looking at this list was an amazing experience as I noted, how many of our classified staff have so very many years of service in our district. Because of the existence of this type of longevity, our students are able to develop relationships with so many of our staff. These relationships with the adults often last throughout the entire time our children are at our schools. It enables the children to find advocates and cheerleaders that they can count on for all of their needs. Having a consistent group of grownups around also encourages accountability across all grade levels. Our students receive the same messages in the classroom, in the hallways, on the grounds, and on the playgrounds from these adults, and it shows. Consistency often makes them feel in for one another when needed because we have a built in familiarity in what each other does. The longevity and consistency translate well for our working relationships. Knowing that we can count on one another as we conduct our daily tasks makes our working environment feel safer, more productive, and successful. There's a credit to our district that so many people are willing to stay here and do the fantastic work that we do. But it is also a credit to the wonderful classified staff that they remain dedicated to the mission of educating all of our learners regardless of the challenges which may be posed. Working in the office now, I get to hear all of these great comments. I hear a lot of remember when comments like, remember when Mr. Medhoni played basketball with us in kindergarten? Or remember when Mrs. Maher was handing out the cool band beats? And a lot of these events took place three and four years ago. That longevity is very important to our students, to be able to maintain those connections. Consistency, however, does not mean complacency. Our vibrant group of classified employees are always ready to learn, embrace, and employ new practices. We all derive great energy encouragement from our students as well when we try our new strategies and our new methods. The changing landscape that this global pandemic has caused has benefited us as well. We're able to see what wasn't working and make a change. We're able to take what works and make those things even better. We have learned to be flexible and pivot as when the need arises, partly because we know all of our colleagues are doing the same things and that they will all share what really works and doesn't work. We all advocate for one another when things need to be addressed because we have those long-term relationships from which we derive our own learning and growth. Having a consistent and dedicated classified staff in our district is what makes Kentfield stand out from other districts. We appreciate the opportunity to share this with the board as well as the public because acknowledging how valuable it is to have a long-term dedicated staff is a great way to retain, attract, and hire qualified and well-respected educators. Thank you.
Thank you both, both for those presentations. I'd like to say on behalf of the board, thank you so much for all your hard work over the last couple of years. We know how difficult it's been and we have a lot of gratitude, a lot of respect for longevity and a lot of gratitude for all the hard work and pivots over the last couple of years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think we're now, we're going to hear from Kit.
Right, in the district office. We have our first meeting back in the district office tomorrow evening for Kit in two years. So it makes me feel great, especially as I, this is my last organizing as president of the foundation. And we'll be passing the baton to Noah Wheeler. We will be voting in that slate tomorrow evening and then he will likely be your representative here on out. Of course, I will be there to help them as needed. So our update, our financial update, our net dollars raised, again, just family giving campaign and the business campaign together. We're at eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars, four hundred and forty-seven, with three hundred and forty donors. Again, all of this is on our website, updated as soon as we know it. And we are, of course, now working towards our goal of one million dollars for the district. So we look forward to that and we have our Super Bowl challenge over. We wanted to make sure we gave the PTA plenty of space, Readathon, that's just started and I hope everybody jumps in and gets their kids involved with that. But our Super Bowl challenge was January, end of January, and bumped right up into the Super Bowl. That was to just do a push for some fundraising, try to get the kids, you know, there's a participation challenge. And the fourth graders won that participation challenge and they will have a little donut party, TBD, when that happens. But they have won cornhole for Basich. So we are in the process of ordering cornhole to add to the wonderful supplies for all the various PE coaches. And of course, as you all know, we have our auction on April thirtieth at Fimbo's, three sixty-five. We, you know, y'all are invited and again, this is really important because it's been a few years and we really want to make it great for our community, for parents, especially younger parents who haven't had a chance to be there. With that, we still really need auction items. We have a deadline of pretty much last call is next week, but we're looking for some exciting, unique, bit worthy items. If anybody knows anyone or wants to jump in and reach out after the meeting. Holly Myers is your woman, but you're always can reach out to any of us. And so just last call for wine, anything you can think of, gift cards. And that's really all, quite straightforward and wonderful, all good news and thank you, everybody.
Thank you. And Karen, thank you for your hard work.
Yes, thank you.
We really appreciate it. Erica, I think over to you.
Hi, so I'm filling in for Deb tonight. I'm sorry that she can't be with us and I'm sorry that I'm not there in person, but it was sort of a last minute switch, so I apologize. Wish I could see you all there. I wanted to thank everyone who attended our PTA meeting last night, our general membership meeting. And we had our guest speaker Deputy Ross, who is our new Officer Josie, for lack of a better term, our new school resource officer through the Marin County Sheriff's Department. And he gave a really helpful and also terrifying presentation on social media and cyber bullying and all of it. So it was informative and, as I said, just sort of traumatizing at the same time to learn all the, all the details that he was able to share. And so I encourage everyone to just, you know, keep an eye out for him around campus because he was really lovely and, you know, could be an interesting person to just sort of get to know. I also want to thank our nominating committee because part of our meeting last night was the official presentation of the slate for the officers for next year. And our elections will be held as our April general membership meeting. And at that time, there will be open nominations from the floor accepted, but the slate typically ends up being the board. And so I just want to thank the nominating committee for their hard work in recruiting those new leaders. And I want to thank all the people who are joining the board for the first time, those who are staying on. It's just a wonderful group of community leaders and I'm really excited for the new energy and vision that they'll bring. And it was weird not to, not to be on that slate, but I'm really excited for the people who are going to be joining the board next year. I want to highlight the Readathon and thank Laura Harrison and her team, especially Amy Barr and Reyna Sobel, who've been working super hard to put together our first ever KSPTA sponsored Readathon in the school district. We are planning a day of fun events at Basich and a week-long celebration at Kent. And it is all about celebrating the joy of reading and literacy. And for the little kids, being read to is just as good, like they can look at picture books. They don't have to be reading yet to be able to participate because it's really about the celebration of literacy and loving storytelling or information reading, any kind of reading. And it is also a fundraiser, but really, as I said, the most important piece is that we want to just celebrate all the fabulous work being done in Reader's Workshop, Writer's Workshop. And if, if family is struggling to participate, we also do have an angel fund. And so we, people can donate to the Angel Donor Fund and then we will make sure that any family for whom a child would like to be able to participate, but that is a financial, there's a hindrance to that, we will absolutely make sure that that child has some contributions in their page. If you have not gotten a page for your child, if you are a parent in the district, please let us know and we can try to figure that out. But everyone should have gotten that and there are also paper forms available. So if you prefer to do it the old school way, we can do that as well. And then the other thing that I want to have on everybody's agenda coming up is at Basich on April fourteenth, we'll be hosting the Maker Fair, which is the next iteration of the Makers Night, which used to be a family event and therefore only kids who had a parent available to bring them on that afternoon or evening were able to participate. We're really excited to be able to bring this event back, but even better, as an integrated part of the school day. So on that day, which is a Thursday, I believe, the fourteenth, Lawrence Hall of Science, which is the Berkeley Museum of Science, will be bringing in a full program of maker project work, hands-on maker experiences for the Basich kiddos to come through with their classrooms. And we will have parent volunteers on campus for that event. So keep your eyes out for that signup genius that will be going out to sign up for shifts. You can sign up for just like sort of a window of time as opposed to the whole day. But it's a great way to watch your kids have a really fabulous hands-on STEM experience. Other things coming up on the PTA calendar, we have Teacher Appreciation Week and we'll be hosting the luncheon that we traditionally have hosted and have not been able to do in the same way. So we're very excited about that and there'll also be campus-specific celebrations of the staff. And I say Teacher Appreciation Week, but in the Kentfield School District, we really do it as Staff Appreciation Week. So it's the official name for the, you know, national program is Teacher Appreciation Week, but it kept filled its staff appreciation because we love all of our staff members. And last couple of things I just wanted to point out, the Basich yearbook is for sale. While Kent Student Activities runs the Kent Yearbook, obviously the little Basich bears are a little small for making their own yearbook. So the PTA takes that on. The books are on sale now, on the thirteenth, the price goes up, so order yours today to save, I think it's five dollars if I remember correctly. And then orders close on April twenty-ninth and that's a hard and fast deadline because it's through the yearbook company. We cannot place orders after that point. You can also, if you, if it's for some reason you can't order online, you can do a paper form and we'll make sure those are available at the office. Or you can always contact me with any questions. And finally, the, the PTA will make sure that all students who are qualified through the district for free and reduced lunch receive a book for free, but if there are any families for whom purchasing your yearbook is a financial burden who do not have, are not on that list for the district, please reach out to Yvette Villarreal and she will make sure that through the district, protecting all confidentiality and privacy, we will make sure that all students who want yearbook can receive one. The final thing I wanted to announce, to share is just that in the past twenty-four hours, we have recently decided that the PTA will host a little like lemonade, social coffee for parents, a lot of decaf probably at that hour for the Basich Open House, just as a little celebration of the fact that we're finally all back together on campus and especially for those parents who've never gotten to do an open house in the Kentfield School District. We're really excited to just kind of find a little way to make it extra special. So there'll be some, some little treats at that event. And I think that is it, April meeting, elections, and that's it. And if there's anything that anyone has any questions with, please always feel free, you can reach me and Deb at president@kspta.org for a little while longer at least.
Thank you, Erica. Thank you for that. Thanks for the Readathon, it sounds great.
It's gonna be really fun.
Okay, moving into superintendent and staff reports, district update from Raquel.
Okay, so I have some, some general updates. So March eighth, I can't believe we're here when I hear Erica say April, voting for a new slate. It's like, where did the year go, right? So some quick updates, so our KSC calendar, so just wanted people to have a heads up. We've actually also had some outreach from the public about the KSC calendar for next year. There is. There is some discrepancies related to specifically our spring break and what this board and our staff has approved to move forward for next year. And so in an effort to try to maintain alignment across specifically our feeder districts, but across the county. Because it does have a fiscal impact when we don't align specifically related to our Marin County Office of Education Regionalized Programs. If we have kids attending those programs and we're not in session, there's transportation issues that come into play. So there is a county-wide calendar committee that meets and one of the guiding principles is now universally, spring break will always be scheduled six weeks from the midwinter break. And the notion of that is it gives enough time for teachers to be able to do what they need to do around themes or units that they have for kids. So there's, that'll be a universal application that I learned at our last superintendent's day. So you can anticipate that we may be bringing that calendar forward for another review. So third time's the charm.
Before you do that point, because I've never factored in the idea that not aligning, I thought we were just being in alignment with our feeder district and just for families in our own staff, making sure that that was. But now you're saying there actually is a real financial component that, and that just doesn't mean to the feeder district, that means universally.
Yeah, because of the transportation piece, specifically around special education, it's one of the areas that bubbled up for us.
Right.
Not us specifically, I would say Kentfield, but in general, when we were talking about aligning calendars. So it's been something that there's been an effort in this county for quite some time because we have so many districts, we do it differently. So what there's been a commitment to is to try to stay with the same winter break, the same midwinter break, and the same spring break. And so we're trying to find some formulas and starting with the high schools because of the way high schools with grades and semesters and such. So.
Great to know. No, thank you for that, highlighting that because I've never heard that before.
Youth Truth. So I want to shout out to Virginia. I'm giving her eye contact right now because of all of the intentional work that she did with the communication plan with our said administrators as well and their work on continuing to push information out. The standalone messages to try to really get good family participation. We doubled our participation. And so we have 65% participation rate of families. At our next board meeting, where Virginia and I believe are scheduled to do a debriefing with Youth Truth about the data. And so we're planning to bring that forward to the board as, as a follow-up presentation. So just for people to have. So thank you for all those that participated.
Well done.
And then open house. So as you heard, we've got open house around the corner. March 24th for Kent, 6:00 to 7:30. And March 31st for Basich, the following week from 6:00 to 7:00. And so you heard Erica mention a little social out near, on the yard, near the play structure. Just an opportunity for families to kind of have this like a chance to get to know each other. So. I'm going to speak a little bit about an update on enrollment and staffing. I have a slide that I'll touch on and then my, and my presentation with talking about updates related to COVID and public health. So. Enrollment. So right now, just for people to have our class size average, and this is in alignment with our collective bargaining agreement with the Kentfield Teachers Association. So for K5, excluding first grade, the average class size is to be around 25. For first grade, size 22, and then 6-8 ratio. So typically it's been between 28 and 30. And so one of the action items the board has on the agenda later is to determine that ratio. And so we're making a recommendation around a 1 to 28 ratio and all such and that further when we get to that spot. But you can see here kind of how our enrollment is projecting. Currently 21-22 where we stand with a little over 1,000 students, almost 1,050 students. And then where we're projecting. And that projection is just a roll into the next school year. We're taking the exact same numbers that we have for current kindergarten students and using that for a projected number for K. And then based on a formula of looking at birth dates, we projected for UTK of 40 students, so two classes. So right now, we have 29 students registered for UTK. So just for people to have, and we have 62 kindergartners register. So we're not that far off from those numbers. But you can also see at the very right-hand side, the difference between the two years. It's not a significant difference. But we do have smaller classes this year, which I think is an important factor to put into play. And I think coming out of the year after COVID and just kind of all the pivots that had happened last year, I think was the appropriate thing to do. So we are seeing that we're going to have a 1.0 FTE reduction in certificated staff. This is going to happen through natural attrition. We have eight retirees this year. So it's not gonna, it's not an individual person that we're reducing. So later on the agenda, it's also part of the action agenda. There's a resolution to reduce that 1.0 FTE. And that's part of the budget planning we have as well. So that was the plan based on enrollment that we would anticipate a 1.0 reduction. So that's where we are with numbers. So I'm going to go into COVID updates. So here is, on the left-hand side you'll see are the key areas that people should, you know, kind of be paying attention to. One is the school masking. Two is quarantine and isolation has not changed. We haven't received any guidance from public health, but that's going to be changing from our current practices. And third is that we're bringing back contact tracing. And so you may recall, prior to January, there would be notifications that families received if there was an exposure in a classroom setting. And so we haven't been doing that since the surge with Omicron, but that is something that public health has said would come back into play. Especially with the masking requirement shifting. So here you can see our case rate in Marin County, 8.7. You see the numbers increase a bit with the unvaccinated, 27.5. Boosted 8.53, fully vaccinated 6.29. So this slide really shows that, you know, the more people that are vaccinated, the less the likelihood of transmission. And then you can see the peak that happened in January with Omicron surge and then how that's gone down and where we're at today. One of the things too that you'll note is that we are no longer, I'm not showing the dashboard. That was something I would typically show, but because we've shifted the way that dashboard is being utilized, I took this screenshot from our public health. So CDC, this is the community transmission level. This is their framework that they, that we are familiar with, that they've been utilizing. As of March 2nd, Marin County was still in the high-risk area, but we're moving to this process of substantial moderate right now, based on where our numbers are going. But the key that I want to bring up here is that this is a prior framework. They're shifting their framework and that should be released. And maybe it has already been released. I have not seen it yet. But a new framework that they were planning to release last spring, but due to the Delta and then to Omicron, they had to slow down with that release. And it was really around this notion of what is the capacity of our healthcare system. And that's how we're going to determine some of the steps that we're taking. So this here is a snapshot from CDC's new framework. Again, it focuses on the sufficient of capacity within the healthcare system. 200 is the new threshold. You see that on the left-hand side and you can see the indicators listed there. And so the idea is that you would move between low, medium, and high over time. And Marin has been categorized as being in the low area, that our healthcare capacity is pretty strong right now, based on our case rate and what's happening there. So it's just good to know. That's why I have that arrow listed. Again, I don't know that the framework has been released yet. It might be where, where there's a, a meeting with public health tomorrow night. And so I anticipate that they'll be touching on this as well. So masking update. So this is the slide that Dr. Santor and Dr. Willis are utilizing to talk about just the shift that's happening with school masking. And to note that this is the California Department of Public Health in the state, removing the requirement that children wear masks in TK12 settings and early childcare settings. Our Marin County Public Health continue to strongly recommend that all individuals in schools and childcare continue to wear masks to keep this added layer of protection. Especially when we're in the spot of high transmission. So you saw that, that was from the prior framework. But moving into this next one, we're looking at being in the low based on our capacity. What they're also talking about is the importance of really urging parents and guardians to keep your children home when they're sick. And so, you know, I think that that's going to be a big message that we're going to continue to relay out to families is that we have to recognize that we are a collective body and that we need to work together. So on Monday, I shared a story. So when my son woke up, came into the kitchen and said, Mom, my throat hurts. I said, okay, let's take some swabs. You're safe home today. He was fine, but it was negative. But we really need to do our part as community members because if we want to keep our schools open, we want to keep people as safe as possible, it's just important that we really take it all seriously. With this new shift in the masking updates, the big impact on us as a school system, I think on our staff truly is going to be the contact tracing. This too is part of, was pulled from a slide from public health. And what they're telling us now is that any child or student that has spent more than 15 cumulative minutes within a 24-hour period of time and then shared indoors airspace that is COVID positive, during the infectious period, they will be notified, right? So they'll get an exposure notice. So the idea is that for elementary schools, if you're in a classroom, a self-contained class, you would get, your class would get notified of that or any kind of after-school program, if you're in Marin enrichment or some childcare program. For middle and high school, what they stated was a universal notification. And so what this could look like is all the sixth graders could get notified if there's a sixth grader. So I think this is something too, again, the devil is going to be in the details with this because I think a lot of this, you know, it feels like we had time to really get ready for this, that as it's coming closer to us, you heard Warren speak to it, it feels really fast. Because these things have not yet been fully ironed out. But I'm hopeful that we'll hear more from our public health officers tomorrow evening. Exposed students, regardless of vaccination status, it's important to know. They are saying should, you note the word should, not shall, not required, but should get tested. Our schools still are equipped with tests, so just for people to know that. And, but those will run out at some point, that they should get tested within five days of exposure. And exposed students should wear masks if you're under quarantine. So, you know, we've heard people say, okay, masks are going away. We're not going to have to wear them again. It's really important for folks to know there are going to be situations where kids are going to need to put masks on again, where it's going to be a should situation. And as I showed before, there's that low, medium, high, and how we move along that continuum as a county. There may come a place in time when we have to require it again for kids. So it's just important that, that's just our reality right now. I think the way Warren described it, it's back there, we can't kick it away, but it's COVID here. So. So COVID next steps. So what we're anticipating and waiting for is an updated 32-point plan. I'm hearing rumblings that it's going to be probably like a 10-point plan. But I heard that at the beginning of the school year and stayed a 32-point plan, so we shall see. It's important to prepare for the ongoing pivots as we did. So it's just going to continue to shift right and left as we move through the school, the school year. And even for next year, March 9th, 3pm, public health update for school community. So I urge people to listen to that. I'll send a separate message out tomorrow to remind people. We'll obviously get the recording and post that. You know, I had the opportunity to listen to a school leader recording. It's kind of nice for you to listen to the recordings. I know Heather, you like to do this. Because you can go back and re-listen and wait a second, did they say that or did they not? So. So that'll be there. And then on March 14th, Monday, the day of Pi, the, you know, KSD will transition to strongly recommend asking in school settings. I think it's important for folks to note that this is, this is a big shift for us. And we have committed as a community to follow public health. Our staff are, have been absolutely fabulous. They're asking questions and trying to give guidance based on what we know right now. And working with us. And we want people to feel as comfortable as possible. But we also recognize that this is a big shift. And it's not just for our staff, but for our children. There are kids that have been on school campuses and have never done that without a mask. There are kids that have gone through puberty masked. And so there's, there's angst out there. And I was speaking with a parent this morning and what she said to me was that the kids, you know, her sons, friends of grade-level kiddos were saying things like, well, I'm just going to kind of see what other people do, right? So, you know, we went through this with the outdoor masking. Right now, when you stand on any one of our campuses, oftentimes you see more often than not, kids continue to stay masked if they get. So we'll just continue to navigate the system and, you know, continue to give that praise to our staff on site that are working with their children and helping them feel as comfortable as possible. And thank you to our administrators who are also on the front line there. So with that being said, I think that is it for my presentation. Once you guys have questions, you can call up our administrators.
You know, Raquel, the, the part about the, the student ratio, I know you're going to cover that when we get to the, to the actual, but I, I always think it's useful, especially for any parents that might be listening for one of the first times to see those numbers, just to put that into context, especially at the Kent numbers, the 28 to 30, what that really means in practice and what we're sort of seeing, just because I think that can sometimes be a shock.
Yeah, for sure. Man, if you don't mind helping me explain that a little bit, I'll pull the slide up when it comes time, but I think you articulated very well. So thanks for that. For sure. Okay, so I think it's time for our principals. I don't, Mariana Grant, I don't know which one wants to go first.
All right, Barbara Dabby. Just want to review some things that have just recently been happening. First, at Basich. Last week, we had our walking rule to school day on Wednesday, super fun. People who walk their role, took skateboards or bikes, scooters, they got a little racer, and then they got a raffle. We had four big raffle winners and they were all very excited. It's very cute. And we intend on doing some more. So we're going to have, I think, in April, we'll have three more. Wednesday, and then we'll end on the May 4th, and the May 4th be with you. It happens every Wednesday. So it's like the Jedi challenge. So that's really fun. We're excited about that. It was very popular. So fun. I played music and the kids really liked it. They got to be a couple of minutes late for class because it took a while. We also had Rattle Day on Friday with fourth grade last week. That was super fun. All the fourth graders participated. A lot of parent volunteers, so grateful for them. And they had a lot of fun too. There was weaving and corn husk doll making and painting with paper plates. It was to, it was like it was pottery. So they were making pottery designs on paper plates, which was really neat. Some other fun things going on. Oh, we, right before the break, we had the Lunar New Year Parade by the first graders. That was lovely. The whole school came out of their classrooms and the first graders went around the entire campus. It's noise makers, they have little dragon puppets. And then even like the fourth grade had their dragon puppets out, were cheering on. It was a beautiful thing. It was so fun. And that kind of set us off into the break. First graders are going to the marsh. I think they've all made it now, they're taking a walk to the marsh and that's really fun, just getting off campus, doing something different. And it's funny going into the classrooms, all the preparation for that because they just haven't done anything like that. So like, okay, you have to listen to me. What do you do? And they have to bring you this whole like reviewing the rules and not lose any first graders in the marsh. So that was wonderful and nothing happened. And they all just loved it. They really, I think they were just so happy to be out there. They really did follow directions and rise to the occasion, which is really nice. I think that there's several classrooms, I think all, in second grade have started with the salmon eggs. Again, they've done this before. So they have the tanks, they have to keep them really cold. And just a great process. I was in Marty Ross's class the other day. And they were showing me, you know, a couple of scientists show me. And it was, it's really neat with all the technology that we have. They could come up with the iPad, with the camera on and show what's going on in the tank. And then it was on the Apple TV in the classroom. So all the kids were like running around the tank and you could see the eggs and they teach me about if there's a bad egg and it's dead, that they have to get it out because they get fungus on it. And I learned a lot about salmon in that for a period of time. Very excited about that. So that's really fun. And then this month is March Mathness, Math with a T H. And so calendars got sent how many English and Spanish, and there's something to do every day for math. And it's very little appropriate. It's kind of cute. And the teachers are also asking students about what they did and giving parents the choice. You don't really have to do what it says on March 10th. You could do any activities during, during the month. It's kind of fun to focus on that. And March is kind of exciting because we have all these things coming up in March. On March 18th, I have my principal chat. I moved it so that I could have the enrichment teachers involved, like they had it at Kent. And we're having it from 9:45 to 10:45 in the library. So we have several enrichment teachers coming to talk about their programs. They'll probably show some videos they had done. Probably show that library video camera. I would love it for more people to see it. And then on March 21st, report cards come out. They'll be available in areas. And if anyone needs them printed, print them for them also. And I heard PTA talking about the Readathon on March 23rd. We're very excited for a whole day of that. Of course, in elementary school, any reason to have a pajama day and bring your, you know, loveys to school or what else do they call them? And so that's, we're excited about that day. And the, the PTA has been just fabulous with providing ideas and setting up authors and mystery readers and guest readers and things like that. And then the teachers are having some fun too, with any ways to focus on reading. And we've estimated, I think, that there were maybe a couple, a couple hundred minutes of reading that day. So this, because it is a fundraiser sponsored by the minute, but really everyone's going to read the same amount of minutes. And if they participate in this day, so that's nice. And then, yeah, open house on March 31st, very exciting. Be my first open house, but a lot of parents' first open house. K1, 2, you know, and so we're excited that it'll be also a community event with kids. um, we're excited that it'll be also a community event with kids, PTA doing the little social part. Um, and then your child is your host, so that's really fun, you know, showing their classroom and where they sit. But also like, here, this is where we sing, and this is where I do art, and it's a nice evening, we're very excited about that. And it's kind of like a day in the life. I think in the past, they used to do it more in May. It was like a culmination and everything, that kids, you know, importantly, they did this on their desk, and this is more of a this is where I learn, and this is what we're doing right now, and this is what my class looks like, and so it's, I'm very excited for the evening. Um, and I just want to make a plug for our after-school safety. We've been having a couple issues with just, I mean, we have a beautiful campus, and it's open to everyone, open to the community. But after school, our staff is doing, you know, staff things, they're in the classrooms working, and per professional sign even there any longer. And I think it used to be that parents would come and physically pick up their kid and come to the door. So I know it's so different than before, and so now parents are allowing kids to just hang out for a little bit, at the playground before they pick them up. It sounds like a lovely idea, but we've been having some trouble with safety and, and, you know, all it takes is one to get hurt. It makes me so nervous, and so trying to encourage families and remember to pick up your, your child promptly after school. Uh, oh, I forgot to say, third grade had the Kent Field Historical Society come this week too, and that was really neat, and I stayed and listened a little bit to that. The kids got to see pictures of what this area looked like, you know, before they were born, you know, fifty years ago. And they were really in awe, they loved it, because they, they could show the picture and be like, oh, this is down by the river, where, and so that was really neat, because sometimes you think with those kind of things, that students wouldn't be, wouldn't be interested in just hearing about history, but it was history of where they lived, and so they were really engaged, that was really neat too. Um, yeah, that's it, I'm happy to answer any questions that present, if you have any questions. I'm excited to do that later about our interventions and.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I know, we haven't been in the boardroom for a long time, this is really like a homecoming in sorts. Presenting on that side, although this is good. We had a, a great principal coffee last Friday where we highlighted the enrichment program at Kent. And um, it was a, uh, we had enrichment teachers come and share the mini course offerings that they provide to our students. And it was a great opportunity to reflect about just some things that have come out of enrichment over the years. I mean, Kent Tutors Marin, I think is something that many board members are familiar with. It's a, came out of the social action project, actually, over the pandemic, and one of our former eighth graders offered free tutoring to kids. And he developed this program that has now grown to involve many tutors in both seventh and eighth grades. Um, he's since graduated on to uh, high school, but the ten, uh, Kent Tutors Marin Program actually applied for a KIC grant and got a KIC grant granted, and then, and had some done many, many hours of free tutoring for basic students led by Kent students. I mean, what an example of just taking initiative, taking action, and creating something, and then leveraging resources in our community to make it happen and make it continue to grow. Um, many people heard Mr. Dubois over the years talk about the uh, three D printer and that prosthetic arm that a student had created uh, uh, years back, but you may recall earlier this year, the startup class and the kids that, that designed the volleyball uniforms for the uh, all-inclusive seventh grade volleyball team, that's awesome, I am sure, I actually bought a few for my kids with the numbers on the back too, that one of our science teachers ironed on, I, I ironed on for the kids. You just have all these examples of really creative and exciting things coming out of this enriching uh, environment. You may recall a few years ago, the issue of protective covenants coming up from this uh, uh, American Business and Societal Change class, and uh, students really just kind of uncovering this part of history in, in many communities across the country and learning about that because their teacher had presented uh, that opportunity to them. The art, the drama, uh, the really exciting filmmaking and public speaking opportunities are really alive in each one of our enrichment classes. So it was fun to be able to present that to our community um, last Friday, to really appreciate the uh, kick, our, our school's foundation for the ways that they contribute to our enrichment program. And I'm even more excited, believe it or not, to share it with our students um, tomorrow, because our sixth and seventh graders will be selecting courses for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Courses that include some uh, really creative offerings like sculpting in eighth grade. We have not had a sculpture class, but Ms. Rubenstein has absolutely uh, breathed a new life into the kiln that you may or may not be aware, has been a fixture in the, in the art studio, but was kind of buried in a variety of equipment. But now it's been uncovered and put back to use. So many examples of really exciting things happening in enrichment, and uh, we're, we're hopeful that kids uh, find in areas of, of interest to pursue. And that course selection is one of the first steps in establishing a schedule for the subsequent school year. So our students will help us determine what it's going to look like based on where their interests lie. So that, that is a, a really exciting component that I look forward to tomorrow. This Friday marks the end of the second trimester, and uh, Warren mentioned that earlier, you know, going into uh, next week, we start the final third of the school year, and there's quite a few transitions that are happening between now and then, but it is just important to note, particularly for our eighth graders as they approach this final third of the school year. And I was reflecting, reflecting with a number of eighth graders over the last couple of weeks. Typically, we're at a point where eighth graders are way too cool for school and definitely too grown up for Kent Middle School. And part of that has something to do with the fact that we're in middle school where they're there for four years. So by eighth grade, it's really run its course for a lot of our kids. However, they weren't really at Kent Middle School, the physical school, for the same duration of time. So it seems much more common that our eighth graders are a little bit more nostalgic and a little bit more hanging on and kind of really experiencing these final weeks together. So I look forward to what that feels like in the springtime. I love the Spanish presentation, it seems that it's silly with each other, but really um, you know, have command of the language. And I adore that Ms. Rubidian highlighted that the smart angle was about communication. You know, it's not about rote memorization and vocabulary. That all contributes to a student's ability to communicate in a fluent and natural way. And just the joyful manner in which they were doing so, and then just their interest shining through. I mean, that's what we really want to be alive in all of our classrooms, and so I love that that got to be on display for all of you, all of you this evening. To start the week, next week, we will be doing the next round of uh, math growth testing uh, at Kent Middle School. So you're, you're well aware that this is a formative assessment that we've been utilizing uh, to establish areas of growth uh, and areas of challenge, um, as well as real areas of strength for our students in fifth, eighth grades. So students will be taking those assessments as a part of their English and math classes following a schedule um, dependent on uh, on the grade level uh, next week, and I'd like to just take a moment to appreciate Wendy Holmes, the assistant principal at Kent Middle School, who oversees all testing. And it's really important to note, I don't know that it's been acknowledged in this setting, that we've really increased what testing looks like at our schools. I think for all of the right reasons, the map growth has been an incredible tool that you'll, you'll see this evening and in subsequent evenings, the, the manner in which we're using some of that data. But it's a, it's a, it's a whole nother kind of orchestration of assessment that didn't exist in our district before. So when you consider map growth and CASP and LPAC and others, I mean, it, it seems like there's always something to set up for, so. And I know Christine has taken a really instrumental role with that in basic, and, and Wendy at Kent, so I just don't want that to go overlooked. You know, these are additional responsibilities on top of all of the other things. So I really appreciate all the effort that goes into assessing children in a seamless way that really doesn't disrupt the school day as much as possible. Then we get the information we need to teach to the best of our ability to look for it, so thank you so much to both of you for that. Fifth grade this week started the Family Life Unit, which is Growth and Development and Puberty. Those just made some jokes with some fifth grade teachers, hey, how's puberty going this week? If only it was that simple, just schedule when puberty was going to happen. But Raquel, when you had said some of our students have gone through puberty fast at school, that was like a whoa. That is very true and real, and um, just something to just uh, take a moment to appreciate what that means. And the significant portion of our students' lives that they've experienced school in this way. That being said, you know, Growth and Development and Puberty is, is an important unit. As a former fifth grade teacher, I, I always was very apprehensive, although also appreciative for that time uh, with our children. And the bookend of that would be um, Huckleberry Youth and Sex Education for our eighth graders. That's formerly Teens in Transition, but Huckleberry Youth is an incredible organization that really has young adults teaching in, in a more relevant and current way than um, we had typically done through Teens in Transition. It was wildly successful last year, so we're bringing it back this year. Last year, the lessons were over Zoom as students were physically in their full in-person instruction in April. This year, Huckleberry Youth um, presenters and, and, and speakers will be coming into students' classrooms through history class in eighth grade over the course of the week of April eleventh. So we're looking forward to seeing how that, that develops uh, this year. And Teens of Transition was a really special program, and so we're still in a phase of just kind of uh, understanding the benefits and challenges of Huckleberry Youth, and making sure that we're not sacrificing something that we um, that we abandoned with moving past Teens of Transition. Um, however, there's many great benefits that we're finding as well. So we're still um, collecting information about if this is the program that meets our needs going forward, but it will be what we're planning for uh, for this year. Um, you may be aware that all six of our basketball teams are in the playoffs this week, and all six of those games are at Kent Middle School. So two of them have happened today, sixth grade uh, girls followed by sixth grade boys, tomorrow's the seventh grade teams, and Thursday are the eighth grade teams. I think the, the record for all six teams was twenty-five and seven over the season, so we've had a really strong turnout. And uh, I just, you know, reflecting that two years ago is when we all shut down, you know, we had an eighth grade undefeated team that didn't get the chance to go to the playoffs and, and, and go for that flag that they were looking for, you know, the, the pennants that hang in the gym. They, they kind of disappear into the wall for people that don't pay attention, but for the kids, it means a lot, and they desperately want to bring um, at least one of those home uh, to Kent, so it's the first time in two years we've had a chance to do that uh, for basketball, so we're, we're really excited about that. The Readathon at Kent, very similar to basic, the reason it spans over the, over the course of two weeks is our schedule makes it very difficult to stop what we're doing for one day and one day alone, because it, it disrupts the sequence of classes across subject areas. So instead, we're celebrating across the week predominantly in English Language Arts classes and study session, uh, providing kids an opportunity to stop what they're doing and read and just appreciate literature. We have a variety of activities uh, across the week, we're really hopeful to pull together a, a pretty special author's visit. So um, I heard at the PTA meeting last night that donations are already uh, pouring in, and um, we don't have anything to compare it to, so um, it, it seems like it's going to be wildly successful. I know just from a school and literacy perspective, I think it's absolutely where emphasis should be. And I'm excited to see what it can do with regard to fundraising for our PTA. And lastly, we have our open house scheduled on Thursday, the twenty-fourth. Um, it will be just a fantastic opportunity for people to experience a day in the life of the Kent student as you transition between classes. Uh, we encourage parents to come with their children and just get an understanding of the different components that they experience across their day. Look at some of the work and some of the learning that's progressed over the course of the year. And hopefully get a peek into some environments like a really unique enrichment settings, and also get a sense of perhaps what future grades may hold. So the question was posed last night at PTA, if fourth grade parents could come and get a glimpse of, of what fifth grade classrooms and beyond look like. And it is truly an open house, so we, we welcome for anybody who's listening or, or, or board members to um, also please be sure to, to come along and just see what Kent Middle School has to offer. So I'll conclude there, and we'll be back um, with a, a part of the LPAP uh, update, but also happy to answer any questions that may come up based on these presentations. Yes. You know what, I don't know.
Boys won.
The boys won, okay, thank you. Twenty-six and seven. Yeah, we, we have site council and then board meetings, I haven't gotten updates, so I look forward to seeing. Any other questions for the board?
I have a, just um, acknowledgement to you both. I think it's, it's so exciting to see all of these um, these community events. And um, just, you know, I think you mentioned, uh, Maryam, what really touched me is the salmon, just think like the salmon, the marsh, like just listing out all of these things that have, I'm talking about the word nostalgia, um, that really do mean a lot to kids and families. And I imagine for teachers and staff, just to do those kind of rites of passage, I think it just means the world, and it's really exciting to hear that they're coming back, you know, and um, and I'm so happy to hear that you are following in the footsteps, or maybe that was coordinated to do the enrichments together for the principals chats, but I think it's just, I mean, as you know, it was probably the most attended of the principal chats. It was just really, really well received, and I think parents love that visibility of seeing um, who the teachers are, what they're doing, and all of the I think every um, enrichment teacher did such a nice job of talking about kind of, you know, I, well, Mr. Dubois was the one that really just nailed it. Just like, really, it's a place that not necessarily kids are going to like, not, you know, they have to get the straight A's, and this is like the place, it's really a place to find passions, um, and that's such a great thing, I think a unique offering that we have in our schools. And um, I loved how you acknowledged too, the support by um, KIC to make all of these things possible. So I really, I think that's going to be a well-received, um, and I love the fact you're spreading the word too in the newsletter. Because I think so many, I think a lot of parents are commenting on that, so many parents and students would love to see this, you know, these um, presentations. So that the recorded is, is a great thing, and I do love recordings of watching past meetings. It's one of the benefits, silver lightings of uh, of COVID is everything seems to be recorded, so thank you for that.
Yes?
Any other questions for Mariana Grant?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm next, Ida.
District on LPAC goals?
Yeah, so uh, this next item is accountability, and this is a uh, presentation, oh, let me share my screen. Presentation that will be presentation that will be uh, presented by our administrative team collectively, so. So I want to frame this up a little bit, so there's a couple of things. This is called our Accountability Presentation specifically related to the LPAP. And um, we are doing something a little bit different than what we've done in the past. So attached to the agenda is data that both sites put together from the most recent map information that they have. But tonight, what we're going to tell is a story that's bringing a bit more color to what are some of the actual activities happening on site that in, what, that inform the way we um, should kind of plan what we want to have happen with kids, based on how they're progressing. So this is a story that's going to have a number of chapters, and so I'm going to do some reflection and then moving us forward. And so first and foremost, our foreword of our book is just a reminder of this slide related to our core beliefs as a school district, the focus on diversity, the focus on inspiring our learners, and the focus on connections. That's been the constant that we continue to go back to in a variety of meetings that we participate in and remind ourselves about the choices that we're making as a school district. And that leads straight into our four key goals, our goals around focusing on every learner, that we want to engage, support, and challenge all of our students, especially our children um, that need more and want to eliminate the opportunity gap. Um, focus on the support for our staff, acknowledging that you want to give them the professional development and support them in being able to implement their craft in a way that helps kids really maximize their potential. The importance of fiscal solvency, and so you'll hear from Kirsten later tonight about from our second era. And then last but not least is community, is that this is a, this is a vibrant community that very much likes to be involved and engaged. And Heather, you talked about it just a moment ago, about the importance of bringing things back that people are familiar with. And so I feel excited to be part of the school district that we're watching that happen with us as we, you know, get out of this fog with COVID, recognizing it's still there. Um, but just having the community and leveraging those partnerships are so very important. So as we move into chapter one, we've got a little like hinted at that at our last board meeting. And this is really talking about the current status, and you may have um, recalled this slide that I shared, and this was our annual update where we talked about just what are we doing related to the supplemental funds that we receive, the public relief dollars, and then touched on these four goals that I just mentioned before, and then where are we with the metrics and the actions, i.e. how are students progressing? And what are the actions and services that we're providing our kids? And then how does that align with our budget, i.e. how much money have we spent today? So this was a real overview, was the one slide that was provided, and tonight, we're going to focus on the every learner, the academic supports and what you might see in the classrooms, and how that aligns to the professional development that we've been engaged in. This next slide speaks to what's attached to the agenda, which is the data. It's the map data that we have the most recent information, but I want to reinforce the importance of data as a tool and really there for us to help measure how we're doing and how we want to continue to improve as a system. That it is one moment in time, and it's all about looking at progress and how we're intentionally thinking about the iterative process for our students. So if we're seeing areas where we're not making the, the gains that we want to, so what are we going to do differently? How are we going to reflect on that? How like? How are we going to reflect on that? How might how might we adjust? Because ultimately, this data takes us to our why, which is our kids. And I want to keep us focused on that is really where the the money is, right? It's about the students and how are they engaged in classrooms? And these are just snapshots of last week being over in classrooms. And also in the top right hand corner is not our students, you know, getting them excited about learning, but how we're also getting our teachers and our staff excited about teaching and supporting our kids in all different levels. You got to hear today from our students in Spanish, and that was pretty phenomenal. I mean, they're, the way they were speaking with one another and the approach and hearing Rosa speak to the smart table and the focus on the public speaking and how they can apply that universally to all of their content areas is something that we should truly be proud of. But in each of these these scenarios, you can see the kids are absolutely engaged and their educators are engaged in the top right hand corner. So I I hope you enjoy hearing more from our site administrators. And I will let them take over at chapter two to talk about the progress and reflection and start, I think, with Brent and Wendy.
Okay, thank you so much for that introduction. So Wendy and I will be starting our chapter new presentation mostly focused on professional development. Now that goal around every learner and and addressing the needs of every learner with an eye towards closing the achievement gap, incredibly complicated endeavor that doesn't happen with any one action alone. And so what we'd like to start the presentation by talking about is the manner in which professional development has been employed this year to try to raise teachers consciousness around issues of race in our schools, issues of social justice and culturally relevant teaching and pedagogy and how that heightened awareness and application within their classrooms can result in better student outcomes for the populations, all populations that we serve, especially some of the populations that traditionally make up what is known as the opportunity gap in our schools. So we're going to start with a summary of professional development thus far and Wendy's going to take the lead.
Right, it really has been a journey this year that we've been engaged in. And so I'm just going to briefly take you on a walk through that journey, just starting with how we engage our students versus our staff and then our students and our parents in our learnings. So we started with that professional learning day. Actually, we started with some administrative coaching and guidance that our professional developers who've worked with us, Dr. Lori Watson and Marcus Moore, to help guide us in leading this professional development with our staff. So when we engaged and worked with them, then we brought it back to conversations with our staff. And that's been really instrumental with that with our own development, our own personal professional development as well as working with our staffs. So with the professional learning day, that was on October, excuse me, on August eighteenth. And again, was focused on personal development and professional development. And really thinking about how we're raising our racial consciousness. And during that day, our teachers and staff engaged in the development of a smart goal, goal that was equity focused that they could, they could work on and could focus on to be, to help us refine our practices to create more inclusive and responsive stool on schools to meet the needs of all of our learners, particularly our historically marginalized students. We then go dove a little deeper in our deeper dive sessions at two different, two different dates with Dr. Lot, Dr. Watson, September, October. And in the both of those sessions, we're able to engage in an exploration of whiteness and the impact of whiteness that it has on our schools and how we can potentially counter some of those negative impacts that may have we have have on some of our learners and the systems, the structures, the practices and processes that we have at our schools. And so we're able to kind of surface what that might look like in the work that we would engage in that. Our professional learning day gave us the opportunity to further explore our smart goals through an open, through a protocol called Open Space. So our staff use explored individual smart goals and then they determined a common area of interest and staff collectively and collaboratively planned equity related improvements that they thought that we could employ at our school. So it was a really engaging process for us to deepen our understanding of our learning. Then we went on to our smart, excuse me, our site based cultural responsive training that was facilitated by our principals at each of our sites. And there was a slightly different approach and different focus, but the core goal of that was to introduce our staff members to the key cornerstones of cultural responsive instruction and using research based frameworks like the the work of Zretta Hammond and her seminal work, Culture Responsive Teaching in the Brain, and using her Ready for Rigger framework to provide guidance for our work. And it really did serve as an exploratory session for our staff to begin their understanding of what culture responsive teaching looks like and how it relates to their practice. But then led to our guiding coalition classroom visits. So a group of individuals at each of our sites were nominated by their peers to engage in really powerful process where teachers were able to teach with other colleagues observing their their lesson and then discuss that lesson using protocols that the focus of the the business was around the values that were observed in the classroom in the room and the environment, the student, student interactions and the student teacher interactions, really powerful and impactful discussions followed. Following that, the participants were able to participate in professional development to be designed to go a little deeper with their cultural responsive instruction understandings. And we dug a little deeper in our Ready for Rigger framework from Zretta Hammond and Marcus Moore's own framework, the four Rs, where we were focusing on realness, relevance, rigor and relationships, the cornerstone of what we want to establish and we're thinking about how we can make our schools more inclusive and welcoming and responsive to our students' needs. And then that led us led us to the Culture Responsive in the Brain book call up. This was an outgrowth of our site based CRT training held in November. And it, an initial group of interested staff members are coming together and discussing the text on a weekly basis and making connections to their own work and implications for and the way they can improve their practices. And it really has helped serve as a foundation to improve our knowledge base around the instructional approach to better serve our students and adjust our practices. And that is ongoing. Now moving to now moving to our students. So starting from actually last year in May, our Student Voices project was originated and it was facilitated by our Kent librarian Rebecca Jeline. And it did originate from students yearning to have an avenue to express the challenges that they've been experiences related to specifically race at school and other areas of other identities and how to discuss those. And so culminated last year in members of this group being able to develop a video that was shared with the entire school in an advisory lesson and then having a discussion that took place during that advisory class. And a group continues to meet and discuss issues that are arising, being a support for each other and helping each other build their skills in discussing those issues and confronting those when they occur. That then led to SLAM, which is our student leadership, student leaders and tourism movement, which is facilitated by our one and only Dr. Lori Watson, who really is just so inspiring and so empowering and really is making this a wonderful experience for our students who get to get engaged in this work. So she's coming three times to work with us at Kent. And it really does offer an opportunity for students to do some, some personal development on their part. Use our voices to seek positive change at Kent and build their own racial awareness, build their skills and explore ideas around race more in depth through really in-depth conversations with one another. And then rounding out with our parents, we've engaged in our first of four sessions for parents for racial identity. And this is a way for, we believe, we haven't seen that how the outward where this is heading, but it's really around building our racial consciousness as parents and making change again positively in our community and our building our skills in order to, in order to do that. So this is, this is the start of an ongoing journey that has led us to this point and helped us help us really improve the way we serve our students and our community here at Kent as well as every section.
Thank you so much for that, that summary. If we could go ahead and advance to the, to the next slide. So we, we could stand up here and tell you from our administrative perspective that it's after we think that this is happening in our school, but we feel that it is most powerful to hear from some of the students and teachers that are being impacted by this professional development journey. So what you're about to see is a short video that show that has a sampling of four teachers. And these are teachers that are involved in a variety of things, but they are pretty representative of what's typical of our instructional staff. There's also four students that participate in SLAM. And so you'll see that these, these students and teachers are reflecting just about their own kind of lens that they're looking through as they're approaching their work. And students reflect on their experiences in SLAM. So we hope that you can see some evidence of the learning that Wendy has articulated through the very voices of our students and teachers.
This professional development that we've started this year really feels different than the one and done PDs that we do at the house because it really is integrated across everything that we're looking at and everything that we do on the day in and day out. So it doesn't need to be packaged with the what can you do in your classroom the next day because it, that's exactly what it is. And it's valuable and important work.
Specifically around culturally responsive teaching, from my perspective, I'm seeing classes, all classes at the school, and I think I have a unique opportunity to see that. And I see teachers really slowing down and using a culturally responsive lens to teach lessons, whether it be in history and tying in current events or in language arts classes and thinking about the literature that they choose, really leaning into the mirrors, windows and sliding glass doors with literature. And then the observations that we were able to do with Marcus and looking at teaching across the school through that lens has really been incredible. And it just feels like, you know, we're all sort of being lifted up together to do this work to support not only one another, but most importantly, all of our students.
I was really actually inspired by the book Culturally Responsive Teaching in the Brain. And one thing that struck me was how really much the brain, how much the brain is wired as a social, it's a social organ and culturally responsive teaching. And those teachers who really practice that really make the connection, try to make connection with students. Because if we can make that connection, then students are really ready to learn.
So not throwing out everything that you've ever taught, but just thinking and developing in new ways, things that you've already done. So that's, I've seen that across the board.
So one of the things that I've done with my expressions classes, my creative writing eighth grade class is I've decided after reading the Culture Responsive Teaching and Brain, this book again, one of the things that really stood out is just allowing students to have that choice. And so I decided to restructure my expressions class. In the past, I used to assign a type of writing and all students would be doing that type of writing at the same time. But when I restructured it for this rotation, I decided to let students have that choice. And I opened it up. I gave them different genres that they could write in and I provided examples. And then I opened it up and students were writing all different types of pieces. I noticed much more engagement, authenticity in their writing, excitement in their writing. I was able to step back as a teacher and let them do the work that they needed. I had students who were writing perspectives, some wrote fiction. I had one student write a letter to the Marin County Parks to get lights for McGinnis Gate Park. It really opened up just my ability to sort of see, wow, I can let kids be authentic and let them hear their voice. And so that's one of the changes I've saw after this professional development.
I feel like we've had a schoolwide conversation all year and in every conversation I have with other teachers, grade level conversations, a language arts team, we're talking about equity all the time. And so it's just constantly on my mind. And the combination between those conversations we have, the book on culturally responsive teaching is making me so much more aware in the classroom. But also just we're talking about curriculum. As a history team in in fifth grade, we've completely revised how we're teaching colonial history and slavery with much more emphasis on the vibrant African cultures that preceded the slave trade and the enduring resilience of African Americans since slavery times. The language arts committee has had a big initiative to bring in more diverse books and that's having a huge effect in the classroom. Not only are my Black and Latinx and Asian students drawn to these diverse books, but everybody is. And I hear these fifth graders talking about race and ethnicity in ways that, you know, I didn't learn to do until I was a middle aged adult and I'm still struggling with.
I've been trying to slow down with my students and appreciate that we're all about trying to help them be independent learners and to recognize those moments where we can step back and allow them to be in the driver's seat more and to empower them to recognize in themselves their capacities and then to give them that space in order to to own it and be authentic to themselves as learners. And so as much as I can in every day to day interchange I'm having with kids, I'm trying to be mindful of that of on the one hand, modeling for them and scaffolding their access to get to where we want them to be, but at the same time trying to let it be their journey and and to have it make sense to them.
My name is Cole Bester.
My name is Celeste Ponya Barrios and I'm in eighth grade.
Hi, I'm Vivian.
My name is Henry Lee.
Being part of SLAM is like, I don't know, it's like very like comfortable being around like other people that kind of had like the same experience as you and like, I don't know, like just, it just feels like a comfortable space to be around, especially when Doc, Ms. Watson, I guess, like kind of like supporting you through it, but yeah.
As a part of SLAM, we've, I think mainly kind of, or for me as a white person, learned to recognize the racism happening around us and we're starting to learn how to address it and what we can do to try and stop it as much as possible.
So a couple of things we did in SLAM is we worked on how racism can affect the community and how we could stand up to speak against it. And one way it can impact our community, our school is I think it brings more like awareness in the campus. And then I feel like in a way, people are treated more fairly.
It's been pretty cool. We just got to talk about like different experiences with race. You generally get to talk about a lot of stuff with your friends about like serious topics. So yeah.
It's really great. It's really great to have all these caring, loving people around. And we're coming around one goal and trying to make it happen. And it's, it's really amazing to feel that space, community.
Like I heard some kids like are deal with racism on like a daily basis. And I feel like I feel like people are more aware that it's not okay. And I feel like it's really good for the school.
What I found like powerful and like our little grouping, I guess, is like the spiritual, like how you feel about it, how your mind is and like what you kind of think about, like all this racism that's going on in the school. I feel like it's a good way to like express your feelings and to see how other people are feeling on the school.
Uh, I think we need to focus more on like social issues and like more importantly, like race and
Uh, I feel like SLAM is like a, like anyone can join it because it brings awareness and I feel like I feel like our school, like, like the world needs it because racism is not cool and people should know that and like they should know how to speak against it.
I just think that a lot of people like, I guess, look up to me sometimes. Just like, I see like these like sixth graders or like grades like below me, I guess, kind of like seeing what I'm trying to do on the school. So I guess that's kind of like kind of looking up to me, I guess, and looking up to anybody else in my grade and kind of like trying to be confident on like how to stop all this. Yeah.
It absolutely does. I mean, last year was kind of my personal racial reckoning where I realized just really what this country was built on and what is happening around us and to just see that perspective change and then see it this year, like in our history class, we're learning about histories of all these different cultures that I never thought we would have previously learned about. And just all across the school, me being able to recognize that more and people recognizing that more too and us all coming together. And us all coming together and I've really seen a change in what people are saying and what they know they're saying and how we've become better people at the school, I think.
Noticed it got, it got a lot better since I was in previous grades. It was kind of like iffy, iffy, like we didn't really talk about a lot of stuff, but it's getting better by the years, so yeah.
What I want is for kids to feel like safe and like a part of the community. Like I want like them to feel like they're equal to everyone else, that no one's like less than, or their person.
It feels pretty good. We just, yeah, it's, we're about to finish eighth grade, so I'm really excited about graduating.
I think the biggest thing for me has been seeing how the lens of equity and access is really an umbrella over so many initiatives and things that we've been working towards at Kent that tie, tie those sometimes feeling disparate pieces together in a, in a way that's given a cohesiveness to it that I really appreciated. And so that's my biggest takeaway.
Lori Watson has been incredibly, has been incredible with her leadership. Kids just talking about their experiences with race. We've got an incredible group of kids of color on this campus that are finding their voices. And I feel like we're giving them a platform to have their voices amplified in our smaller group. But I really also see in the classroom, the confidence of students to speak up in their classrooms, not even necessarily about issues regarding race and equity, but just about all things. And then our white ally students really thinking about things in a different way and becoming leaders. And both groups as a whole, like just leading the school and their peers into, I feel like, a whole new era.
So those video clips were from yesterday, March 7th. So it's, it's, I just wanted to share that to say like this is a reflection of like just how deep into the work that people are to be able to articulate the evidence that they're seeing across our school, the students to be able to articulate their experiences just so willingly and in such a present way. So I'll ask that we'll transition to the final slide for Wendy and my portion. And I'd like to just. That happens to me every time. So just in conclusion around the professional development piece and Ms. Fields and a number of the teachers mentioned, this, this social justice and equity work and culturally responsive teaching is truly an umbrella over everything that we're looking at. And so as we analyze a variety of things at our school, we find that it's bubbling up from teachers to encourage and challenge us to consider the lens of equity. Everything from our SMART goals to a close analysis of our bell schedule. Teachers were asking, are there, are there considerations for traditionally disenfranchised groups that we should be thinking about that the bell schedule might impact, that the master schedule might impact? We're talking about relationships and how to make sure to enhance those relationships in classrooms. We're learning about wise feedback through Zaretta's admin's work and looking at standards-based feedback as a way to give very specific feedback to children about their progress and areas for growth. And so I just wanted to highlight that essentially in all of the things that we do and the way that we structure school, we're looking through that lens. And you could, you could hear teachers reflecting that they're feeling it in the various professional meetings and discourse that they're engaged in with their colleagues.
So much we could say about the curriculum impacts of this work and how it's connecting to equity lens is really overlaying the work we're doing in our classrooms and the instruction that we're providing our students. Just, just building on or connecting to some of the things that Jennifer Sterling said. And our classrooms are really being deliberate and intentional about our selection of texts. Really carefully and considerably curating our libraries so that students are able to see themselves in the texts that are in their libraries, that we're having, we're integrating texts that have, allow students to see multiple, multiple perspectives. And that they're able to tap into their interests and see relevance in the reading that they're doing in their classrooms. Our language arts department is doing this by bringing in, through some of our teacher grants and other grants have been made available and just, I'm just taking the initiative to bring in those kinds of new texts. Our history department is doing the same thing. There was, Jennifer also spoke to the history department, thinking about the units that they have taught in more traditional ways and revising those and bringing in different sources and amplifying the stories and the voices of, of communities that may not have been told in the past. So really making intentional instructional curriculum decisions around that.
So from an instructional perspective, I'm actually going to use an example from some of the basics teachers. They're culturally responsive teaching professional development. And a fourth grade teacher had reflected with regards to relationship and connection with students. We often talk about connection before content, but this particular example shows how connection can enhance content. The teacher had reflected about how one of her students brings Pokemon cards to school every day and there's a school rule about not bringing Pokemon cards to school. So she was faced with the challenge of, okay, so do I just continue to reinforce this rule? This is what this kid cares so much about. And she reflected about that to say, no, I think there's something I can actually leverage from this kid's, you know, passion about Pokemon cards. And she chose to actually bring the Pokemon cards into the classroom and use the imagery on those Pokemon cards to teach lines of symmetry and to help that student actually use the Pokemon cards to reflect that student's knowledge of lines and symmetry and then to teach other students in the class. I thought it's such a brilliant example of saying, can we find ways to connect what we need our children to learn with elements of their lives that they're passionate about? And it's such a simple and silly example, but it's also such a poignant example to say, if we are willing to look at things through a different lens, we actually completely transform what a curriculum material might look like and what expectations of kids look like in our classrooms.
Last thing, thinking about the climate that we're developing in our schools. We're really connecting that equity lens to a restorative justice or restorative practices that we're employing when, in all kinds of situations, in situations when students are potentially making not the best behavioral choice. We respond in a way that we're, if it's, they've impacted another student, we're thinking about how can we make, prepare the harm that was done, help restore that relationship and build that connection between those students moving forward. Really centering our own relationships being a cornerstone of the culture responsive work. We've also seen that because of our conversations around race that, that have been amplified more than they have in the past, there have been more situations or incidents where there have been conflicts or misunderstandings around race. And so that is, or other, or other identities such as gender. So we do welcome those conversations, build, build that understanding and connection between those students. And we think that that's helping to enhance our overall community that we are, we're striving to develop at Kent.
So in conclusion, I mean, the goal is about closing the opportunity gap. You might say, okay, so where, how does that fit into what we're talking about? The opportunity gap has plagued education for as long as education has been a thing. And so much time and, you know, uncalculated sums of money have been contributed to closing that achievement gap. And I truly believe that part of the reason it hasn't been closed is because we're not looking at systemic issues that have led to the opportunity gap. So what we're trying to do is to demystify what culturally relevant teaching is and truly meet every learner where they are. And to have faith that with the commitment that we've shown to this work, we will eventually close the opportunity gap in KSD. And we look forward to the day we can celebrate that with all of you. So with that, I'd like to turn over chapter two to our colleagues from basic.
It's not, it's supposed to, after the next thing after that, I'd say.
No, it's fine. It's all good.
So for us, what we're focusing on is still same thing, goal one, except now we're talking, we're talking about the action items of targeted interventions and progress modeling. And to be clear, Kent obviously does interventions and progress modeling, but we're going to discuss basic today and then the next core meeting will flip. So we will actually discuss some of the more specific things, how the professional development has affected our teachers at basic at the next meeting. So I just wanted to throw it out there. And we can't really talk about targeted intervention or progress modeling without really looking at the big picture of our whole multi-tiered systems of support. And we'll spend most of our time today talking about the one that's yellow. And I'm going to explain this in general terms, you have a lot of information there. Before we do that, give you a little taste first of all, of one of our kindergarten targeted interventions. It's the very next slide because we've got things, we have been troubled with our videos, real quick. We're having trouble with our slide, our videos playing in a big size with our workaround. So looking at this slide, you can see the triangle. And that's basically an example of the tiered system. So the green one is the biggest one because that's what we do for all kids. So you can see under there, the core program, and those are just big buckets. So it's not everything we do, but the concept is we do it for all kids in every classroom. So that's standards-based curriculum, differentiated instruction. You'll see whole group, small group instruction in the classrooms. That's not intervention technically, you know, it's, it's in small groups, but everybody's getting the same thing. However, we have differentiated instruction during that time where the concepts are the same, but maybe the teacher's doing it a little bit different for different groups of children. Sometimes someone gives grouping, sometimes another gives grouping, but that does happen. And then as you can see at the bottom, it says MTSS team meetings. So in our multi-tiered systems of support team, we're looking at all the data, all the information, everything about kids. And that progress monitoring, we're thinking about all students. So all students take data that's reviewed. And then the yellow, now we, we look at a more targeted group. So now we're talking about what interventions kids need on top of what they all, what everyone gets. So it's an and. And so that's basically what we're talking about today. Those are a list of some of our interventions and Christine will go more into that in a little bit. But also within our systems of support, thinking about, that's when we have teacher team meetings. So now those are meetings where a teacher's worried about a student and they come to the MTSS team, they fill out a student share form and they talk to us about that student. And sometimes in those meetings, that's when we're addressing, oh, we put you in this targeted intervention. Or, you know, oh, this student's our chat intervention, which we do next to do more. You know, what are the other options for this child? And then the top, smaller little red triangle is for the very few students who need even more intensive intervention, usually smaller groups, more, more frequent. And specialization you can see is in there. That's kind of a, you know, the, one of our most intensive interventions is specialized instruction. But we also have, currently one of our interventions is the Samba system of phonics, phonics intervention that's really more intense. And so it's just a smaller group and it's every single day. And then you see there the SST meetings and those are the student success team meetings. And we have those when we're worried about a student to the point where we want to meet with the parents, the school psychologist, sometimes the counselor, sometimes the speech pathologist, administration, any kind of support in a bigger group, a team that's deciding on how we can make good decisions about students. So let me show you quickly another quick intervention video. So this is a period Becky and she's been explaining to you one of our, about one of our targeted interventions for first grade.
Hello, Kent Field School Board. We are so proud to share with you what we've been doing first grade intervention. In collaboration with the administration, they authorized an extra 30 minutes of paratime first thing in the morning based on a need that first grade identified. So the first grade team shares three paras from eight thirty to nine o'clock to target specific skill areas with students working below grade level in a certain reading skill that we identify. So for example, we've done several rotations working on snapword flashcard sort of practice. We did a CVC and blending words unit with this intervention. And there was one more, oh, right now we're doing vowel teams, being flexible with trying vowels in two ways when they come across words that might be CVC or maybe they'll be magic E or maybe they will have a vowel team as in the word rain. So those are some of the intervention cycles that we've planned. And kids get to meet in small groups with a para to go through a certain quick practice, five to seven minutes, four days a week. And we've had tremendous success with this program. For example, recently we reviewed Snapwords for the second round. And an English learner student had started out this round with 41 Snapwords. And the current goal right now to date is 115. And this student grew, I think it was all the way up from the forties into the one hundreds with his Snapword power. Now I want to add that it's not just what's happening with the para. Thanks to the admin and to the board for supporting us with ESGI, which is an assessment platform. We're also able to give these assessments to the students and those generate parent letters and flashcards. So with this particular student, I know he's also getting home practice. So thank you so much for supporting our intervention and ESGI. I hope you enjoyed that quick bit. Thanks.
Really great overview of her intervention, but it points out something really important that I wanted to make sure I could share was a progress monitor. So she pointed out ESGI, which K and one use. It's one-on-one where they can sit at a computer with the students and like Snapwords or what she meant was, and she said CVC, that's consonant, that consonant, or then adding a silent E or even having vowel pairs like AI. And so that's a great assessment tool and, and that's what they use to be able to figure out what children will go into intervention and also as a post-test, pre and post-test for their intervention, did it work? And so other progress monitoring tools we use are teacher-made pre and post tests. So the intervention teacher has a pre and post test. We use MAP assessments. We use curriculum assessment from the classroom. So Eureka Map Unit of Investigation, exit tickets. And then teachers do a lot of informal observations during class. So for example, if the classroom teacher was doing an intervention and there's a small group and she's working with a small group on the same thing, you know, so it's doing the rotation, paying attention to what's happening in that small group, each one of their students, and then being able to go, oh, well, so, 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 I didn't get this. What am I going to do tomorrow differently? So that's not a, that's not, that's not a pull them out and what, that's a quick targeted intervention by the classroom teacher created by a situation where she's observing and taking notes and then applying the intervention. So I will, Christine, get into more of the nitty-gritty details of the data around all our different interventions.
Hello, Kent Field School Board. We are so proud.
So I'm going to talk very briefly with this slide and then actually I have videos for you as well. When we're looking at this, there's a lot of data up here and we're not actually going to go that in depth with this. But I want, what I want to be really clear about is this is a snapshot in time. So when we're talking about intervention, intervention is incredibly fluid. You have students moving into intervention immediately, you have students moving out of intervention as they graduate and as they make progress. So when we're looking at this particular chart of interventions, this is showing us having 132 students being served through intervention, which is totally over 2,000 minutes of intervention weekly. This is where we're at currently, but this was even different a week ago because we have students who have made progress and as we're monitoring that progress, they're graduating out of these intervention programs. And so what data is on this slide might be different two, three weeks from now and it's definitely different from two, three weeks ago. So I think that's a really important piece of information as we talk about data and as we talk about the interventions that we provide to our students. It's really meeting the students where they are and meeting their needs. And so, Rappel, move to the next slide. This is actually a student talking about how his needs have been met in intervention.
So what do we do when we work together?
We play game, mystery games and we read and we focus on our comprehension. And I think it really helps with like my reading.
Nice. What benefits have you seen? How has, how have you gotten better as a reader and as a student this year?
I think the stuff that you've taught me has really helped me with my reading, like some of the words that I read my books.
The last time you read with your teacher, how did your reading change?
It changed by helping me read and like I really, I really got better at it the past few times I've been doing it with her. And it's really helped a lot.
So go ahead with the next slide. So this is a student who, I talked about that flexibility.
So what?
When we see a student need, we step in, we rise to the occasion, we determine what does that student need and how do we provide those supports? So this student in particular was really struggling with comprehending his stories. He actually was reading on grade level. But part of what we look at when we're looking at how a student's performing is not just can I read a fourth grade level book? But can I understand that fourth grade level? And he really was struggling with that comprehension. And so this is where those teacher team meetings come into play. The teacher filled out a student share form, she came, she spoke to the teacher team meeting and we agreed to put together an intervention to work on fourth grade comprehension. And he's one of the students in that, that program. What's really great, and I pushed him a little bit forward and I think understanding data is hard for us, let alone for students. But the last time that he did his Fountas and Penel assessments with his teacher, not only had he grown progressively with his classmates, so he still grew those three, four reading levels that are expected in fourth grade, so he is still at grade level, but his comprehension scores skyrocketed. And part of that is students buying into what they're doing. And so what you saw in the video, what I was showing was a mystery reader. And so what the students are doing in those fourth grade reading groups is solving a crime. And it's reading clues and interpreting the clues and figuring out who done it. And one thing that I really love to share with him and it goes to that Pokemon story as well. When we get the students to buy in, they make that growth. And he and one other student in the group, group both came to me and said, we love doing these so much. Can we have them for home to do with our parents? And so he's now taking home, not, he's working with me and with our fourth grade group on a weekly basis on these comprehension skills. But he's also taking home one mystery a week. And that's what they do at dinnertime is they're reading through the clues and they're talking about it as a family at home. So he's building those extra skills at home because he's passionate about it and because he's interested in seeing his own personal growth. And so it's really that buy-in from those students that help us get where we want to go. So when we're looking at our data, we're looking at how do we do those groupings? How do we move students kind of in and out? So you'll notice we have a number of assess, a number of interventions that we have at Besage, starting from our Sunde system, which is that more intensive, five days a week, really small group. It's three students who are getting that targeted phonics intervention. To all the way down to the other side, our homework club with more enrichment, where it's only two times a week, it's larger groups. So we're looking at where are our students' needs and how are we meeting those needs, either more intensive or less intensive. Some of our programs are ongoing and others are specific amounts of time, which is part of how we determine when students move in and move out. So when we're looking at those first grade Snapwords or LLI or math clues, there's a set amount of time, they do a pre-check assessment, a post-assessment, and often do a midpoint assessment. At the end of that session, the intervention teacher sits down with her data and with the teachers and they determine what students made growth, they graduated, they're moving on out of intervention. What new students should we bring in? What students need one more little session and then hopefully we'll make the growth that we're expecting. And what students need something more specific. And those are the students that move into our teacher team meetings and our SSTs. There's other systems that are ongoing that are more fluid. And that's where we're going to see more of those changes to students serve and interventions. So for example, we just have a student who during a check-in assessment in Sunde, graduated out of our Sunde program. He really made the growth that we were looking for and is able to move back into the classroom and get what he needs in the classroom without that super intensive intervention. And he's moving kind of back into LLI. So he's getting still some targeted supports, but again, that less intensive targeted supports. So it's kind of moving back up or back and down, I guess, the levels of supports. And similarly to the math boost programs that I'm doing. So I stepped in, I'm in the very lucky position to be able to speak to this data, have someone who runs some of these intervention programs. And so my math boost program, you'll notice there's not as many students in it as the one run by Winnie Hawkins. The reason for that is as they're building their groups and they're building their schedules, sometimes the intervention schedules don't work with the teacher's schedules. And there were students in certain grade levels who were going to miss out on enrichment classes to go with Ms. Hawkins. And we said, we don't want them missing out on that. Those are the areas where these students shine. And so we adjusted our systems and so I'm running Winnie's program with a group of students. But with that, because it's that one class of students and they're on the same schedule, we're considering it more ongoing and we're moving students in and out a little bit more fluently than what Winnie does with her six-week program as students make growth and as students' needs arise. So within the last month, I've actually had two students who graduated out of that math group, math boost program, and then one who entered. And who likely will be in it for a shorter period of time. She's a new student to our school, she joined in January. And so this is really an opportunity to get her kind of caught up to her classmates with the curriculum that we're using. So again, really focusing on what are our students' needs. So we actually have another video on the next slide, giving you a little bit more information about how we're meeting those students' needs with LLI specifically.
Hi, my name is Katie Knopf and I want to thank the Kentfield School Board for the opportunity to share the work that we are doing this year in reading intervention at Besage. With the support of our administration and the KIC Foundation, we have built an intervention program that can serve our students in kindergarten through fourth grade. This year, the students that participate in reading intervention come four times a week for thirty minutes a day. The program we are implementing is LLI, which is Level Literacy Intervention by Fountas and Penel. In collaboration with the classroom teachers, we identify students who are not making expected progress. And we form small groups that work intensively at the identified reading level to help the students move closer to grade level goals. LLI is a comprehensive literacy program that incorporates reading, phonics, writing, comprehension and fluency practice. It is a supplement to the strong literacy teaching that is happening in our classrooms. A student success story that I would like to share is a current third grade student who began intervention last year as a second grader. She was, she's an English learner and she was reading at level C, which is a kindergarten level as a second grade student. And I am so happy to share that she is a student who is now reading at grade level. But the best part of her success is her incredible effort and her joy and her confidence that she shows as a reader. So what I believe, we are so fortunate here at Kentfield is that we have the opportunity to turn students from struggling readers into students who love books and love to read. And I'm very grateful for the opportunity and the resources to do this important work. I hope that this intervention update was helpful and thank you Kentfield Schools.
One thing before I talk about the pictures that I do want to share and, and we're going to give a little bit more information about this. But I, at, at the end of doing that recording with Katie Knopf, we were having a discussion about interventions as a whole. She's between sessions and so this week is her week to get her data together, start prepping for her next round of students, which starts next week, which gives her the ability to move in the classrooms and work with students more pushing. And so it was really heartwarming to me to be able to talk to her after recording, we were talking about intervention. And she, I had approached her about doing the video and she's like, you know, you talked to me about us doing this video. And, and I started thinking about this, I was walking around campus, all the interventions that we do on a daily basis. And she's like, you know, I, I teach intervention, but I'm so head down about it and I see what's happening in my classroom and in my little box. And she's like, you know, now that this is more at the forefront of my mind and I'm moving in and out of these classrooms today, we are so incredibly fortunate to have the amount of interventions that we do because there are many, many schools that don't. And it's so seamlessly done across campus. And it's something that you'll notice and we definitely invite you to come to campus and we're happy to walk you around and show some of it. And I was thinking about it even from the perspective of the guiding coalition work that we did with Marcus and Lori. You don't know what to look for until you know what to look for. And so when I walk in the classroom and I see kids kind of all over the place doing various activities, which is kind of what you see in number two and number four on here, but those are typical classroom pictures. I walk in and I have a teacher who's working with a small group of students. I have a para who's working with a small group of students and providing those supports. And those are again, those tier one, everyone gets, everyone gets small group instruction with their teacher. Everyone gets para support. And that is what you expect to see in a classroom. But then when you start to think about it a little bit deeper and you see, here's this para working, number three, working with two students who just need a little bit more. And those aren't students who we've necessarily identified, but those paras are in that classroom and they're able, the teacher's able to say, hey, these two missed this last lesson, can you catch them up on it? So they don't fall further behind. And then we move into those more targeted supports, which is the pictures label one, where you're seeing what happens during that first grade targeted intervention that Carrie spoke about. So we have our para working with one, and there's actually one other student in that picture. You can't see him because I, there was a file cabinet in the way. But she's working with these two students and they're working on those flashcards down in the bottom left. So they're practicing their Snapwords and how fast can we get from one Snapword to another and really gain that rote automaticity. And we as educators walk into these classrooms and we're able to name all of that, but really seeing that big picture and seeing, these are the things that happen every day on our campus that are bringing students up and they're closing their achievement now. And that's huge. And we're just so proud of the work that our teachers, our staff and our students are doing. Because if the students weren't putting that extra effort in and they weren't engaged in not learning and excited to learn, we wouldn't be seeing those same rates.
Just that was all I had too, that when you're talking about the students, they love to go to intervention because they're getting what they need and it's fun. And they're in a small group and LLI is very scripted and very, you know, you have to be focused and then you do this and you just, but they like this, this success they feel because at their, at their level. And then they know, they're talked to about, my gosh, you just read ten more Snapwords or you just, oh, look at you, you moved to this next level. And so really making learning visible to them makes them more motivated. And if you see in number four, that's a fourth grade class. So a lot of times you talk, we talk about centers and it's K one, maybe centers, you know, but all our grade levels have opportunities for small group instruction, which is like Christine said, that's, that's a green. And then when it becomes intervention, those are the things that we see in number three where, but it's been happening in the classroom. And for all we know, even in number two, our teachers could be doing intervention right there. So she could be having a homogenous group that she's decided to pull during, you know, pulling that over each, maybe she has a para with some other kid. Sometimes we see teacher, they're teaching whole group, but then they have the two off to the side and they're doing some big little support that would never mean a lot to the group. So there's just really so many iterations and these others, you know, begin to show the picture. But yes, you are very welcome to come and see with your own eyes how often these small groups are happening in there. So we're happy to answer any questions. I know the data page was a lot, a lot of information, so hopefully we do that again and then ask us any questions about that.
So the, you know, I started the presentation with sharing that this was a different way for us to give the board a glimpse into what's happening within the school side, related to professional development for our teachers and then services for our kids. And just the reminder that that data that was collected is ultimately there to help define our course of action and the recommendation. You heard both team members talk about taking the data and it truly being an iterative process and being reflective on what do we need to adjust and how is it so fluid? So it's all a point in time. I appreciate Christine, when you said that this is a snapshot of what, what's happening right now related to intervention based on what we've determined through the data that we're looking at and what feedback we're getting. And so as we continue to be reflective and see how kids are progressing, it's important that we keep that in mind. And so for future chapters, we'll continue in this chapter two around all learners and hear a bit from Kent around their interventions, from Besage around the professional growth for their educators. And then lead into chapter three, which is talking about the community and looking into the climate and culture of our school settings and really look at these truth data and other ways in which we're getting that information. So this book will continue into our next board meeting. With that, we are, can stop for questions and then I think we'll probably go to board break.
No question. So Grant first SLAM, I think it's so amazing that so many students like just took a leap of faith. We had another Voices group before, but to have so many students want to get involved with it without really just kind of knowing a ton about it in a first year is really amazing. And I'm wondering if there's been thinking around like now that that group has, you know, there's more excitement around campus for students that didn't choose to, you know, participate because now they've heard about it from their friends. So there's both sort of like existing Kent students wondering if there's going to be like another cohort next year. And then if you've done any thinking about like the incoming fifth grade class, if they would have an opportunity, just thinking about how like, you know, those students that, it sounds like so many students are having such a positive experience with it and then, you know, building it up to their friends and everything. So just been, I know it doesn't sound like you, but there was like an expectation that there was going to be that many students that joined this year.
Yeah, we didn't know it, anticipated.
Yeah.
We're, we're about a tenth of our student body.
Right.
I mean, that's pretty incredible.
Right.
You know, from working with Lori, it's about starting with personal development. And so starting within and then looking without. And, and so the, the interest is that SLAM group will eventually start working on projects to bring to the broader school community. So I'm not certain what Lori's vision is as far as how to pull more and more students in. I think it's to work with this leadership group to then bring some of the learning out to the rest of the school. But we're going to have natural, you know, turnover. We have some eighth graders obviously that are participating, that'll be graduating out. We've got more students coming in. So I expect that it will morph from year to year. We, we are so fortunate that Dr. Watson will be continuing with us for the next two years at least. I mean, we'll see where this journey goes. But I'm hopeful that this initial SLAM group will develop projects that positively impact the rest of the school with some.
Just a couple of things. First of all, I'm so glad it's a multi-year initiative because I think that's so important to hit people over time. So I think that's great. And I appreciate how you're sort of mirroring what you're doing on the teacher's side in terms of having a cohort of a certain number of leaders that are doing it and then expanding that and having them do the teaching. I think it's a great respect to the students that you're doing that. So I think that's really good. You know, this is the kind of stuff that we, we promote and, and fund and champion and it's great to see it in practice. I've seen some of those interventions in the K and first grade class and that ESIG thing is really quite amazing how they're able to do that so quickly. I think we'll all reflect on having been in classrooms at Besage and at Kent. But certainly at Besage recently and, and noticed, oh, that little group over there is doing something and that group over there is doing something and understanding that that's all, there's a method to all that madness, right? It is really neat to see. So thank you for highlighting that to us. It's an important part of what we do. Thank you.
I just wanted to say a quick thank you for the presentation. I'm sure it was a ton of work to put together. I really enjoyed the videos and the pictures because for me, I need to visually see it to really understand. I really enjoyed the videos and the pictures because for me, I need to visually see it to really understand it, especially as a non educator. And, um, I thought you guys did a really great job explaining things that is easy to understand and that. I think that you are all doing incredible work and so thank you so much.
Um, no, the only thing, um, I, I loved the, the presentations, um, individually and I think it's interesting, next meeting, you're going to flip flop and do, um. The opposite, I guess, just from like my own structural, um, perspective, I, I would have liked to see, we've got this data pack, um, just to tie that in to see, I mean. I can only imagine, I look at this and I think our, our school's incredible, both schools are incredible and things that are going on. But I would love to see it how it's tying into this data and to, to know the story behind. Why the data, I mean, as, as a board, part of our responsibility is to, to look at our data. Um, and then do it and, but to have this type of the story behind it is, is so much more valuable than I think in the past. I know that. When I look at, you know, we tend to just look at the data and kind of like, why does fifth grade look to this in sixth grade? But this provides so much more, um, meaningful. Background and context to why the data looks like it does. And so such a suggestion for the next meeting is to maybe tie it into. You know, as much as possible. I don't know how, you know, maybe with interventions, it's easier to do than the, I mean, I can appreciate from the, um. What's going on with our, um, three year commitment, um, and the journey we're on. I don't, I know we're not going to see this direct translation to like what's happening in sixth grade and we did this. If, you know, professional development in our SLAM, I know that that's not going to happen, but somehow to tie it back to this, I think will make it more meaningful for me, um, in the future.
I think we do have a lot of data and we have some data sheets that we haven't seen before about the interventions. So I think we'll. Digest those and sort of discuss how best to incorporate that into a study session or whatever we can do. Next to make sure we get the maximum benefit from all that, the data and the insights that we've gained tonight.
And I think just both of you said this, and I think it's really nice that you're offering more opportunities for us as board members to see all of this in action. I know that. We received invitations over the last week, um, from, uh, both Barbara Libby and from, um, the ELE, ELA, um, group of eighth grade. Um, and I was able to go to both and it is remarkable to me just what's happening. Um, and this is someone who's sat through many of these, um, over the years. But you see there's changes that are happening and it's a very conscious and I don't, you know, just, um, it's a really exciting program. And what I was asking about, you brought up a lot about the curriculum, um, and how much more, um, just thoughtful it is. And I, and I was very curious, of course, I had to ask, well, why did you pick this book and why are you in this group? And because there are different groups. And it really is just student led, like they are picking the books that they're reading and there are all kinds of books. And if, you know, then of course I asked the question, well. Are, you know, is it obvious where the boys are going to go and the girls? It's just, it's all over and they really, I, I was just so impressed to see. How intentional it was to make, and you know what? You don't like, there was one group that they didn't like any of the books that were up there. And so. The four of them had different books and then they had one overlapping book that they talked about, but it was allowed to say, you know, I'll be the only one reading this book. And that's okay. You know, we can outlier on that one and then, but we can still talk about it from the perspective. So it's just, it was exciting to see. And I, again. I, I just to see it in practice is very different than sort of, you know. Um, and I think to Annie's point, to see the visuals, it is really different than to, to read about these theories. So. Thank you to both. And I, I do want to take you up, I think the intervention idea would be fun to see at, um, at Basit.
Before we close, I just want to extend appreciation to the team members for putting that all together. That took a lot of time.
I can only imagine.
It was a real way to, our Marcus actually was the one that gave us the recommendation, try to do it differently. Uh, because we really wanted, um, our public to see better what's happening and, um, how we're changing in real time. So. Um, we know that there's the data that we have in front of us and trying to continue to think about how we offer this book for you all, but. Wanted to be sure that you have a better glimpse as to what's happening. So thank you all for your work. Um, I saw the like faces on the shared Google Doc throughout the course from yesterday to today. Wendy, you were up late last night. Anyway, so thank you guys.
All right, we're going to take a quick break if you'll indulge us and then we'll come back for the, um, finance report. Thank you. Okay, turning back and talking finance. This is the, um, second interim budget presentation.
Just. So while this is loading, I'll just mention that we, well, at the Wolf Control Plan, the staff just spoke to, that's driving our budget. So rather than me just talking numbers, 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 you hear where the money's spent and I'm just going to show you which topic in which office. So we are in the long stretch of our current fiscal year. Um, this is the, um, third or fourth financial reports on the current year budget. The second interim budget, um, is when we revise the budget to reflect our actual revenue expenditures to premature to January 31st. And we have a snapshot here. This is a pie chart of our revenues. So current year revenues are just a little over 19 million. Um, they include, uh, one-time state and federal revenues. You see the, um, the green slice and the red slice. That's, um, slightly. Um, larger than our normally seeing and those are because, um, we have the COVID one-time funds built in there. So that pie is, um, slightly, um, off this year in a good way. And then of course we have our LCFF funds, that's our property tax, and our state base, that's the largest percentage of our budget. And then our local revenues, um, that also includes our parcel tax. So the local is really, I think, will hurt us a little bit because it's parcel tax, KSP, PTA. Um, and it includes, um, it doesn't include all the volunteer hours that are spent that you can't quantify, but it will say that local revenue contribution is a key. Okay, next one. So I just want to point out one more time, the one-time funds, um, have been tremendous starting last year. So we're looking at almost a combined total of 1.5 billion dollars. And those funds, um. Uh, the latest revenue, you just, I've heard reported it at first interim, that is about $621 per student. But overall, we've taken in all these funds and we have a three-year spending, um, timeframe. So rather than, um, pushing them all out at once, we're cautiously allocating it over three years. And this pie chart reflects our expenditure budget. And then the, um, other areas of the budget, the contract services, maternal supplies, um, some of the, those are some of the tests we've heard about, the, um, the. Student transportation and some of the other upgo is just our general operating expenses. Um, I also want to point out that on the salaries pie chart, that, um, classified salaries, it also includes a 2.5% increase in classified staff. So the summary, the net change in the fund balance, in first and second interim is just, um, about $6,000. You can see that, um. One thing I want to point out is our beginning balance, there's a difference between first and second interim and that was due to the audit adjustment. We, um. Uh, increased, uh, our fund balance 83,000 by shifting funds between two years. That was audit, uh, adjustment. And then I also, um, wanted to point out on page seven of your board packet, that, um, this is just, uh, fund one, but page seven is funds numbers for all funds. So you might want to take a look at that. Yeah. Okay, so what's happening next is on May 20th, um, we're going to attend the governor's committee mission. And, and I will hear about some changes to the proposed budget. So the, at the January, um. Budget meeting, what we heard from the state, we, we didn't hear very many, uh, much good news. We didn't see pension relief, we didn't see discretionary spending, we saw a lot of categoricals. We, so I didn't have anything that we reported positively. I'm hoping May will, um, change the tone a little bit. Um, we also, looking at next year's budget, we are, um, we have two new programs. We have the, um, universal meals where we need to provide breakfast and lunch to any student who asks. And then we also have the ETK program. So Mitch, um, who, um, put together this lovely chart with our historical meals costs. So I just wanted to share that so we could, um, start paying a little bit more attention to what our food costs look like. So you can see it's grown over the years. So these costs, um, uh, Kentfield has been, um, paying the cost of just the FRL program. So all the other students have been paying for lunch. So it's, um, gone up incrementally over the years. And they are, um, KSPT is fully managed program. So not only have we then benefited from their grants and other services, but they provide the staffing. They manage the program, serve the food, they're on site. So that's a tremendous benefit to the district.
And that's just the FRL expenditure by the district.
Yeah, that's great to see. And I, I look at that as the great to see. I know from a, I know I look at this as my finance slide, but it's really exciting to see as a district.
Yeah.
That we are able to do that. And also I think reflects the changing demographics of our district, which is.
So this is, um, I, we're, we're not nearly prepared to begin to announce on what the cost would be for next year's food program. But we do need to start thinking about it. So this is to start to think about it. So if we look at a hundred percent, um, participation, um, it looks like it might cost a little over a million dollars. So we know that we cannot do that. That is, that would just blow the budget. Okay, so then we look at the next column and say, okay, well, what would it look like if we were serving 25% of our students? So it looks a little more manageable. Um, still 100,000 is, is, is a huge encouragement on the, on the general fund and that would pull away from instructional programs. So we're, you know. So then we look at, um, if we just possibly were doing our FRL program, it would look at about a hundred thousand dollars. So this is just food only. It doesn't include any staffing. So we also have to consider that we need to provide service, provide the food to the students. So I, I honestly don't know where it's going to fall. It'll probably be somewhere between the three and the one, but we're still trying to figure it out.
Just to be clear, the FRL is embedded in the 25.
Yes.
Yes. And that was our high point with, with your chart from before was what, 87 or something, right?
Uh, yeah.
Eighty, eighty-six, right?
So it's a little bit.
So we're spending 86.
Yeah.
And we could be up to, well, two and a half, but we need to think about three and a half.
We do have some comparable districts though too, sorry, in Marin that are starting this, right? Didn't Miller Creek start it as well as, I, I want to say, um, Tam Union. Do we, do we know what kind of percents they're seeing in terms of participation or is that?
The, um, well, Larkspire now has started a green reach program and they have about 25% there.
Okay.
There, they have a better goal that serves and then they have a higher, um, a difficulty people. So, so they're in the food service program. So they're, they're, that, that program sustains itself.
Got it. Okay.
But I think the thing is you're comparing, but every, every district's slightly unique.
Right.
They have to have staff, they're going to get staff, uh, managing the program. Um, yeah.
And there's also, I was just going to chime in on this one too, is that, um, the quality of the food is, is a, this district has spent a lot of time vetting out. That's what I've been told, vetting out what might be what's most appealing for our kids and that they'll actually access.
Right.
And so as we think about this, you know, we go to the premise of what this program is, we don't want to offer a program that kids don't want to participate in.
Right.
Because that's the whole idea is to give them food that they can eat because they need it.
Yeah.
Um, and so, you know, the districts have decided to use different vendors in different ways and it may not necessarily, um, solicit a lot of interest. Just based on the vendor. So it's just, we're trying to kind of thread the needle on figuring out what's the best way for us.
Right.
And just utilizing what we know has been spent in the past and wanting to keep a high quality program for our kids.
Right, right. Makes sense.
So again, that will start in next year. So, so we have a few months to figure it out. All right, so this is our, I'll take your protection. Excuse me. So on page, uh, page eight, given the board packet, you have the full spreadsheet with all the details. Um, this is just a summary, a snapshot and, um. Basically, uh, there is a very healthy reserve looking all across the year. So just will be that knowing that, that that's not included in the food program. There is, there is a placeholder of 75,000 for food next year and 25,000. There is a placeholder of seventy-five thousand for food next year and twenty-five thousand for the UTK. And we have that in there till we kind of figure out what we're going to do and how much it's going to cost. But in general, the second interim is, it's sort of us looking to the future and kind of getting ready for what we're about to dive into on budget development. So then the last slide is looking ahead. So the second to last slide. So what we're looking at, we're perpetually always looking at property tax. We have the budget next year. We have a five percent escalator. The property tax will be really good in part because of strong home sales last year. So it takes, there's a slight delay. We have results of that. The stats and negotiations, we're settled with one, not the other, and we're, so that's going to impact the budget. How we manage our one-time funds over the next two years, these are restricted funds. So we're carefully managing and cautiously, but we also need to spend them down. So that's done. And then, of course, the long-term impacts of COVID, including staffing and student learning, it is taxing on the staff, taxing on the students. So we have to do our best to make sure everybody's okay and get through this. And then I put in financial long-range planning because the subcommittee had been to one meeting, that's a new meeting. So we're trying to look ahead and more long-range solution. We know our personal tax is going to be experienced pretty soon. Facilities, we're just tying up the bond, and you know, there's a need out there. So we have to look at those facilities and personal tax funding because they have a big impact on the community. So that, the last slide is just the budget panel. And here we are, we're finishing up the year, we're about to develop for next year. And the next budget report will be the budget here in the May twenty-fourth. So thank you for your time.
Let me go back to the multi-year for just a second. So just so I fully understand.
Yeah.
This does not reflect anything negotiations for teachers.
Yeah, it just includes the one-point-five percent for student enrollment.
Got it. And it includes a placeholder of seventy-five thousand for food and twenty-five thousand for UTK. But the UTK staffing is already embedded in our assumptions, right? Because it's attrition and stuff.
And I mentioned before about the enrollment. So we're natural attrition, one less FTE, that's totally a bunch of that.
And that's in these numbers. But then this reflects person service, obviously, from what we know.
I have a lunch question. I know I have a lot to learn about the whole lunch program, so if this is too much right now, I can hold it. But so it's students, so the students that we will be paying for, it's like, is it going to be like students? That's like, anybody can, anybody register, anybody, is it like by the day I show up and I want lunch? Or like, I let you know that for this month, like, what's the registration or like the signup, basically? So that we know how much, we don't waste food or we know like how much.
That's what we get to decide. We're anticipating that we'll probably follow a very similar model like we have right now. The issue is, though, it'll be our own staffing versus the volunteer situation. But that's part of the details that we need to iron out still. One of the things that we've talked about is the notion of doing a survey to the community to see about interest. We didn't want to intervene with the, these truth surveys, we wanted to wait.
Right.
And we also want to be sure that we paint the picture for people to understand what it, this is a requirement by the state. It's a legal requirement, but it will have an impact on our general fund budget. And so we don't want to extend that really, not really realizing it. So there's a, there's a give and take here, because as Kirsten mentioned, it's going to take away from instructional programming.
But what about, and are families allowed, so let's say you sign up for it? Because I could also see then it becoming like, you know, potentially more like stigmatizing, like, I'm only going to sign up for this if I really need it. Because now I can't pay for it anymore. Like, is there a way to like, you know, donate to like a general fund for lunch or something? So let's say like, oh, my student's going to participate in this, and, you know, in a separate bucket. I'm also going to consider how much it costs the district to, like I would have maybe in the past with how much a lunch costs. Contribute money in that pocket, or does it have to be, is there no way to continue to also get revenue for lunch?
Do you want to respond?
We can't collect revenue for lunch. We can always accept donations.
Okay.
People have done, I think schools, districts have done this when they take kids on vacation. I know that's been suggested.
Or write a check, yeah. Or like the way a field, or like the way with a field trip, it's like, this is the cost. I don't know.
There are ways to work around that. I think that's part of the subcommittee.
The subcommittee, yeah.
And when are we going to hear from the subcommittee more?
Well, we'll be back together at the, towards the end of this month.
Okay. But my reading of the details is that a child could show up any day, any time, and would be fed.
Right. But at the same time, with our current program, right, people still, we still have like, people are signed up. Whether they're getting it for free or they're paying for it.
Yeah.
So that food is obviously, so there's like a note, we know sort of how much to plan for. For us is like, I mean, there's always extras that day, but there's not.
My reading of the details is that we can't count on that as much as we do. We have to be ready for a lot more.
Yeah, the good thing is, as long as we're not in the national school lunch program, we have choices. We can offer something. We're not beholden to anybody's ingredient list. We can do yogurt and milk in the morning, and that has a long shelf life. And, you know, so we'll figure it out. It'll be fine.
You know, I'm curious about, I know you mentioned pensions have not been talked about, but you have not heard anything that it might be addressed later, okay? I know Jay, no one's heard it. Jay locked it either. I'm just curious if you've heard.
I know there's a lot of feedback about it, so I hope that that feedback will be heard.
Okay, I was curious.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the action agenda. M1 policy action, consider the approval of the projected class size not to exceed twenty-eight average per classroom at Kent Middle School for twenty-two, twenty-three school years. Looking for a motion to approve. And a second.
Second.
And discussion.
So I mentioned that I was just going to show the slide, Heather asked about the numbers. And what we're presenting you today is just kind of for the board to give some guidance and support related to the class size ratio specifically at Kent. So we already know for the contract, it's twenty-two to one for first grade, twenty-five to one for K five. And then there's some flexibility related to the board giving some direction around the middle school six through eight. And so here's what, you can see what the numbers were over time for these grade levels. And so even though in twenty twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two, there was a thirty-to-one ratio, that didn't come to fruition. Right now, we're projecting that twenty-six, twenty-eight, twenty-five. And so staff's recommending the ratios not to be below twenty-eight or higher than thirty, maintaining an average of twenty-eight to one for the twenty-two school year. So I don't know, Grant, if you want to chime in, just about what that looks like on campus.
Yeah, I think it's just important to know that that number is average and that it's, their classes typically run higher than other classes. We try to protect a high level of academic subjects that have, you know, a lower student teacher ratio. PE classes would be one, based on the nature of instruction and facilities. If the numbers go a little bit higher than that, even the average across PE classes tend to be lower than what the board has established. So I just want to be clear that that number doesn't mean that they're passing the twenty-eight of our school. And the importance of the average is just the intricacies of the master schedule and scheduling children and the classes they're interested in, that they're required to take during periods when teachers are available to teach them. And so there will be some areas in the schedule that can get a little tight and classes go a little higher. And there's some periods in the schedule where there's more opportunities and class sizes get a little bit lower. So since I've been here, it's been pretty straightforward to be sure that we're under, under, you know, the number that you identify as a part of this meeting. Happy to sit down with any board member who might be more interested, who look more closely at the master schedule. It's a complicated thing, but actually quite interesting to start for the school.
I think the only question I have is whether twenty-eight is too low as a number? Because it looks like the seventh grade is projected to already be at twenty-eight? And if it's across the school, we're fine. But I don't know. I mean, we've set it at thirty-to-one for the last two years. We haven't hit it. It's obviously not a desired target. But I guess my question is, do we want to set it at twenty-eight? And the off chance that we have a whole bunch of kids come back next year that might have left for private schools during COVID? Just a question.
Doesn't this say not to be below twenty-eight or higher than thirty?
So what I, I thought we were being asked to approve as a ratio of twenty-eight, and I'm suggesting maybe we should approve it at thirty. And then if we end up with an influx of kids coming back post-COVID, then we are still good. Because otherwise may cause issues if we set it too low. In other words, I don't know what the benefit is of picking twenty-eight over thirty. We're not aiming for it. It's not like that's our goal.
Right.
I just want to make sure we have enough room.
I'm just saying, my reading of what that box says, it's just my, I thought that that is allowing it to go up to thirty or something, not understanding.
The contract allows some flexibility, that twenty-eight number, there's a certain number, it can go above the line, I can follow the board on that. But putting in at that twenty-eight doesn't mean that it can't go up to thirty. So there is some flexibility in the contract related to that, but.
Didn't require additional staff, some adjustments.
Some adjustments, conversation, you confer, but there's a certain number that it can go above.
Right. I guess my question is, does the box suggest not below twenty-eight or higher than thirty? And we're being asked to approve twenty-eight. And my point is simply, why not approve thirty? And if it ends up being twenty-seven, great. I don't see any harm in.
What do you think is the best outcome for the district?
Um, well, I'm giving the recommendation twenty-eight to one, but if the board wants to adjust that to thirty-one, I mean, I don't know that that will come to fruition. I mean, you see the pattern there.
Yeah.
If it weren't for the COVID piece of it, I think I wouldn't be so worried, but we had a lot, you know, a lot of people leave that might come back, and I just don't know.
It's just. Yeah, I'm not, I will defer to staff, to be honest with this one, because I feel like I'm not close enough to know. I don't know the master schedule. I don't know. I mean, that's, but I hear what you're saying, though, Sarah. That's a, it's an interesting perspective to keep in mind. I mean, and there doesn't really seem to be much downside. I mean, but what would I, did you just say, though, Rachel, just to be clear, twenty-eight to one, we can approve twenty-eight to one, but it could go higher with some discussions. But does that mean financial discussions, or is that, okay?
Now, how do you address that? I mean, just, you know, sit down and talk with them about what does that look like?
Okay.
But again, you look at the pattern, not seeing that happen. I'm going across the wall.
Right.
But so twenty, but the past two years were at thirty, so is there a reason to reduce it? I saw the deduct, there was another slide earlier tonight that showed declining enrollment for what we know now.
Not significant. It was eighteen students, I think, total, ten and eight, between the two sites. So not significant, but yeah.
But we could just maintain, you know, what it's been the past two years, knowing that, of course, with master scheduling, you're going to create the best class sizes that you can.
That's my thing. I just don't see a downside to picking thirty. That's my.
Is there, Grant, is there a, I mean, it's more about your campus, is there a downside of us saying thirty to give that flexibility that it could go up to that?
That doesn't have an impact on the master schedule in any way, shape, or form. And I would defer to Rachel, just from the district's perspective. I don't know if there's a benefit to identifying a class ratio of slightly lower for perhaps.
I was going to say that, I thought you were.
Historical numbers. So a number of thirty allows for more flexibility within a schedule. I could imagine there may be benefits of identifying a number lower than that in order to reflect to the community. But again, that's well beyond.
Right. I wonder, though, if we could then say, anticipate, like, could it say, project, yeah, projected average is still going to be whatever.
Yeah, the average is twenty-eight to thirty. So I think, you know, I would, it feels like there might be more questions from the board on this. So I'd rather just pull it and let's not take action tonight.
There's not a deadline or something.
We do. We have to, we have to decide it this month according to our contract. And I don't remember if it has to be at a regularly scheduled meeting or not.
So we have a special in March, mid-March, March sixteenth, and we can bring it back and discuss it then. Because I just feel like if you guys want more information, like, you know.
I mean, from my perspective, I want to make sure that you guys have the flexibility that you need to implement the best program possible. And you're saying that you can do that with a twenty-eight to one, and we're wanting to give you more flexibility if that's to help.
Well, I think if we have to increase staffing, we have to bring that forward to the board. You guys have to look through that anyways. So, you know, it's, and right now, we're seeing that we have a reduction in staffing. So, you know, I don't know, I've given the recommendation.
Yep.
The board wants to change that, the next year's decision to make.
My preference would be to go with the staff's recommendation, but I understand that there's other.
Yeah, that's mine as well.
What about the other views?
I'm fine staying with the thirty to one.
Yeah, that's where I would go, thirty to one. Because, well, I mean, our actuals from this year are lower than what we're projecting for next year. And we picked thirty to one for this year. I still don't, I don't politically see a downside of staying where we've been for the last two years. We're not going up. Is that what, six years left on the parcel tax?
That's what I was going to say. That's, I see, it raises interesting.
It's important. I mean, it's a valid concern, but it's six years out.
Yeah.
I feel like unless there was a rationale of why to decrease what it says for the past two years. The community has, it feels like we haven't heard a lot of feedback around, the board hasn't heard feedback around concerns about current class size right now that I'm aware of. So I would say, yeah, just hold to, hold to the thirty to one to go out of flexibility and master circle.
Okay, so the proposal is to vote on maintaining the thirty-one?
Yes.
Correct, okay. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Class size, see, the thirty to one continuing the same ratio from the last year. Moving on to facilities, action, consider the ratification of the notice of completion for phase one of the district heating, ventilation, and air conditioning project. Are we doing A and B together, or are we just doing two A first?
I think we have to do them separately.
Oh, they're separate.
So two A, action, consider the ratification of the notice of completion for phase one of the HVAC project. Looking for a motion.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
This is just saying that we finished phase one.
I know, I think it's.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries as written. Facilities, action, consider the approval of the inspector of record services agreement with IA Cooster Construction Inspection and Mount Nocturne Speed thirty-six thousand. Looking for a motion.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Well, of the two bids, this was the preferable one, for sure. Okay, but all I could think about was, have we used the other one, the higher one, before?
We have used them before. And this quote came in so high. Paul, you talked with Paul, I spoke with Paul as well. He just didn't understand why it was so high. If you recall, we have this on the board agenda at the last meeting, and specifically because there was not rationale, we were waiting to get in more quotes. And so we were actually hoping for two more quotes, but we ended up only getting one more quote. This other agency is a local agency that we have used as well, and so it's helped come forward with the recommendations. So there's no worry about going that route. I just don't know why the initial one came in so high.
Right, right, okay.
But.
And to be clear, staff is recommending approval of this.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
The lower.
IA Cooster Construction Inspection Company.
Ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. The approval is granted as written. Three A, finance, action, consider the approval of a second interim budget report for twenty-one, twenty-two.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Think we've had it?
Yes, thank you, Kirsten.
Yeah, great presentation. That's a lot of work.
Yeah.
A lot of work, sure. And it's what the fifteenth is when it all gets submitted to the county.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Accepted as written. Thank you for your hard work on that. Resolution, action, consider the approval of resolution number seven, reduction of or discontinuance of certain certificate in particular kinds of service PKS for twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
So I mentioned this before, based on enrollment, this is what we've said to that, we're projecting one less FTE for the next school year. And this is natural attrition. It's not an illegal classroom teacher, but it's one less in the budget.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Lucy Kerry's written, resolution, action, consider the approval of resolution number eight, reduction or discontinuance of classified services for twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Motion carries as written. Uh, resolution action, consider the approval of resolution number eight, reduction or discontinuance of classified services for twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Looking for a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
So this is kind of a unique situation because as you may be aware, there's new legislation related to classified service and the need to notify someone to align the certificate staff. So given the March fifteenth timeline. Because we increased classified staff in alignment with the COVID relief funds, there are a couple of different, like, um, anomalies with that. So you still, you don't have to provide that same notification because it's temporary funds that are being utilized for those staff members. So because we have a number of people that we've increased and heard, um, Carrie, they speak to, you know, there was approval for additional thirty minutes. Those are COVID relief dollars that we're utilizing for those additional services. And, um, we hired people as extra hires so that we wouldn't be in a situation where we'd have to do a big resolution of reduction of staff. So when we did the calculation, it ended up to be about four hours that we would reduce. Um, and so the extra hires obviously would not be reinstated, um, or at least at this time, you know, we have to look at that and see how staff continue to recommend, uh, services moving forward. So what's on here is the four hours of paraprofessional time, and that's about ten percent of an FTE. Classroom, paraprofessionals work.
And staff is recommending this. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Uh, the revision passes as written. Okay. Moving on to governance. I think there's some people who maybe head home.
Good night, Brian.
Thank you.
You can stay as long as you want.
You're super useful. Great presentation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great work. You're true. Well done. Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Good night. Good night. Hey, Grant, is that your laptop under the chair?
Yes.
I know. You recognize that.
Good eye.
It's camouflage.
It's that wildlife spotting.
That's true.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night. Good night.
Bye.
So for meeting highlights, I think we're clearly gonna highlight the educational showcase, which I thought was amazing.
Yes, for sure.
And, you know, I think we should highlight that, you know, the board received a comprehensive update and the materials are available for the interventions and the other, the investment in professional developments. I think that was great. And it's a bold presentation of, uh, LCAP, and, you know, to make it more relevant to community, and we encourage everyone to.
And we'll have the reports. Um, you know, what, um, the, the board meeting highlights, um, do you need help with those? I was gonna mention.
Sid had been helping me with them. We actually just haven't posted them. I can take that.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I have two at least already that the board's looked at. Um, and I think there's like, uh, at least two that are pending on my desk right now. So this will now be three.
I know. That's what I was, I, I happened to look today and I thought, oh, no. But that, to me, just seems like a flag of like, if you need help. I mean, there's all of us that are like.
She actually drafted some for me for the last month. Um, and I think it's, you did for what month are we in?
We're in March.
We're in March. So I think she did for February and I have for January or vice versa, something like that. So those are the two I have pending. And I think there's one that I haven't actually posted, but the board already reviewed. You just, I just asked Jennifer to post it.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
No, but we'll get it there. I promise you.
Yeah.
So we'll have it.
Is that okay? Just those?
Okay, let's just have two then. Like, I don't know. I don't feel like we have to have three every meeting. No.
That's good.
This is, this is, that's recorded though, too. We could post that, right? Or, that's a fun one to post.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And we have the library one. The plan is that the library one link as well.
Cool.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And we, we actually have a plan to, or I have a plan to have it in a newsletter, but with all the mask and COVID updates.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, those are great.
Okay. And then future agenda items?
I guess the deep dive into the data is the question. And we talked about doing a study session. I know our meetings are gonna be hideously busy probably the rest of this year, but there is a piece of me that feels like this is one of those things we should do in a public, regularly scheduled board meeting where people see us talk about it, think about it, ask questions about it. Like, I think it's a super important topic. So I'm in favor of doing it in a meeting and not a study session, but that's just my two cents.
I feel the same. Yeah. Yeah. I mean.
We would talk about it. We just schedule that as part of agenda planning the next time that comes up.
Okay. Um, so we want to do it in, um, April.
Do you want to get the next, the next iteration of this presentation before we do that, or you want to do it right away or?
I don't know. So April, so just like what we have in April already, um, we were planning to come back, so Kent could speak to their intervention programs. Um, and the youth truth data, right? So those are two things that we were.
Yeah, I, I had written that one down too.
And then the, we have new, we'll have new MAP data by the next fourth meeting.
Great.
Um, that would be Kent's data, because you have bases right now. Um, and then May, May's really insane.
May is insane.
Cause we have the two.
Two.
We have two meetings and we're gonna have retirements.
The product plan for the, uh, for the budget.
Do we have a June meeting?
We do have a June meeting too. We do have a June meeting too.
So maybe, maybe we.
The problem with that one though, I happened to just look, it's the week after school gets out. So in terms of like the, the transparency piece, yeah.
Oh, wow.
It's really late.
Yeah. So that's that.
Could we shoehorn it into one of the May meetings and just have a time, a time block on it?
Well, I mean, we could do it in April. It's just that we.
Well, but I, we're gonna get more data.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Cause I need truth and the other.
Yeah, it's just gonna be data. It's, we've got to be ready for that. Just to me.
But maybe April is better, especially if we can get the data ahead of time. And I mean, I, I thought Kirsten did a great job. Like, if they get us slides and data ahead of time, we don't need to go through slides line by line here in this room. Like, I feel like we actually all do, like, read our packets and look. And so we can get the, like, the videos and the photos are super helpful for that, like, flavor of what's happening. But, um, in terms of giving us data, like, I don't need somebody to walk me through a chart and like every cell of the table. Yeah. I don't feel like that's a very good use of our time collectively.
You guys have gotten the data, right?
No, but I'm just saying for the April meeting, if they're gonna bring new, uh, cause we were talking about, oh, it'll be new data. My point is simply, but if it's new data, they send us ahead of time. We can all have read it and digested it. So we don't have to do that in the meeting. And then we can do more of the qualitative stuff to the extent people want to share. Like, you know, videos, excerpts, examples, and then do a deeper dive into the, okay, what is, what are we learning? I mean, I think the question we all really have is, what are we learning about the interventions we're doing, if anything, based on the testing we're doing simultaneously?
That's what I was like.
How does the data inform the choices for the programs we're spending money on? I mean, at least that's my internal question. That's what I want to know. And it may be too early to know, honestly. Like, there's a part of me that thinks, how do we know for six months to a year before we really have a sense?
Well, especially on the, um, the CRT, I mean, that's the kind of things I think we just have to know that that's gonna take time, which is why we're investing the three years. But the intervention ones, I'm wondering if we can see more.
Be able to see that, and that's.
At least after a year, right?
Well, but in real time.
Yeah.
Like, how many students have graduated out?
Yeah.
I would assume that data we could have. So whether we do that in April or June, I don't.
Let's leave it, but let's just agree to.
To have it. Yeah.
Propose it for the April thing. If we think that we have the pieces of the puzzle and we can get them to everyone in a timely fashion, we'll agenda plan it into that meeting.
Yeah.
And if not, we'll figure out another way to do it. We won't let it slip.
Since we're all here, for sure, for sure. Once we're all here, and then I can hear from everybody about just what it is that the board needs to feel as informed, informed as possible. So we, the packets we get you guys the weekend before the board meeting, and I have been putting the data in there. So is it that you're saying you want it even earlier than that?
No, I think what I'm saying is that it's not always clear to me that the speakers realize that we have seen and read the data that we have. So some, or sometimes they don't give us the data ahead of time, and so they walk us through a table here.
Okay.
I don't think that's a good use of our time, or frankly, even our staff time, sitting here, uh, late into the evening. I mean, that's just sort of an ongoing structural issue, I think.
Feedback that the board is giving me. So we, this year, we have tried to give data ahead of time.
You have. And we've done a good job. We just have one table for usage that has to.
Um, Heather, your child is outside.
And then the actual presentations that are provided in the, um, you know, staff is working on those up until, um, because they're reviewing them differently. The data tables, I agree with you. Those are things that theoretically, just staff.
I mean, and as a professional, I would say that I would hope they're not working on the data tables up until the Friday before the board. In other words, the deadline for them is the Friday before the board meeting so that we have them over the weekend. Like, that seems like a reasonable ask. Uh, whether the videos and all the music or like all that stuff is pulled together is less relevant to me. But if we say any tables and data, we want by the Friday before the Monday meeting or do you say, that doesn't feel like in a professional context, like that's a huge ask.
That's not what I'm talking about. So there's two different slide decks. You guys know the data slide decks that you guys have.
Agreed.
And that the staff is well aware that you guys have.
Yeah, but we didn't have all of the data they presented. So that's what I'm trying to test. That's the piece you and I are going past each other.
Okay. So you're talking about the number of interventions. Okay.
Yeah, but like, how many times a week? How many weeks?
We could have had.
Like, we could have had, I didn't need her, explaining what's.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so there's qualitative stuff that we don't get from the tables. That's a sheer data of how many kids and how many programs and how many times a week.
Okay, that's helpful.
But you did have to walk us through that, because it was not obvious from the presentation what it was there.
Right. It, it, it could have been done in a table where each of those headings was be, was described. And if, like, LLI means what? I have no idea, right? But it's possible to put that in piece of writing that we could all read and digest ahead of time. That's my point.
Okay. Okay. Now, that's helpful. I'm just trying to be sure, because I want to be able to provide you guys what it is you're asking, but if I'm not there, but I see what you're saying. And I, I, okay. So, um, okay, so we can, we can do that. I mean, that's doable. Um.
But it was just on the data piece. It was, I'll say, um, a little disappointing that the data that we received wasn't referenced at all in the presentation. So I, I'm just sort of wondering if there's a way to bridge that in the future.
Yeah, and that's what I got the sense from what you were saying is.
Yeah, I mean, and I know if there's there, that was the intention. Yeah.
And that was, the, the data you guys have is real overarching data, and they were focusing on intervention data.
Right.
Or intervention services, I would say.
Right.
But, um.
Okay, but, but so for example, just to try and tie in, because I'm with you on, I mean, I was happy to have the data, but I agree with you. I would have liked to see. So for example, if we have second grade MAP data and it shows that, you know, at the above or average, the high, higher percentage where the, the Caucasian percentage is, let's say it's ninety percent, and the Hispanic student one is seventy percent. What I want to know is of the kids who are in that thirty percent, that lower bucket, which services are they receiving? How many of them have graduated? Not by student, but you know, I mean, collectively, right? Like, how many kids does that represent? And what are we doing for those, whatever number of kids that is, right? So if it's thirty kids, how many, are all of them in programs? Are they all getting ELA language?
I think the issue that you're saying too is like, it needs to, it would be more clear if it was matched data. So it's like, if we saw that this, these, um, you know, five second graders, then, then you showed us, we're gonna, you know, their, um, another, another assessment of like their grade, like a, like matching the interventions to another, to like.
Their next, their next match. Yes. Exactly.
Because we're, because you could pass, you could, um, buy an assessment in an intervention program. Now you no longer qualify for the intervention program, but maybe to be in the intervention program, you needed to be two grade levels behind. So I'm just giving an example. So then we would still be not seeing them maybe hit proficiency, you know, members on, on this test. So it's just kind of like unclear sort of the through line between the intervention things, the homework cubs and things like that, and then making it visible on here, like, where are those students?
That's right. Right. Changing that percentage. And that's the piece where I was saying, I understand that might take time, right? That might take six or twelve. But I do think, again, just to your point, like, to try and tie, if it's an expenditure of funds for an intervention that we hope is helping those students, I need to see how those students are performing after those interventions and tie the MAP data to those kids. Not, again, individually, obviously, but like sort of collectively.
So we did hear anecdotally, but you're looking for more tied directly.
I didn't, I didn't hear anything anecdotally.
Well, she said that this number of, of the reading comprehension had gone up from in the forties to the hundred somethings.
Maybe that was when I was in the bathroom. I eventually had to go to the bathroom.
Snapboard.
Well, no, no, one of the readers. Okay, sorry. When you say anecdotally, okay. Yes.
Yeah.
Um, I did hear the story about the one six. That, to me, does not.
Yes, it does.
But yes.
And there was, Sarah, your point, there was data on that slide deck that you guys didn't have. Like, there was overarching, seventy-five to ninety percent of students that are intervention, intervention services are showing progress, right? That one thousand plus minutes. So those data pieces, and I wasn't doing, connecting that same way anymore. Sorry.
Only ninety percent of those students.
Cause we're tasked with making the best decision for the students with the money the district has, right?
That's what I was gonna say.
If that's our obligation, then I have to figure out, like, I know, it's too.
Is this correct? I'm just.
Is it the second grade one?
No, the, this is, no, no, no. I, I'm honestly, I, I'm just asking, because I literally don't know if it's like a type of, is, so this, um, this is a basic map. January, February, the fourth grade. So the Caucasian, the Caucasian, is it nineteen percent?
Yeah, that, is that fourth?
That's the one that got.
That's the one that got flipped.
It was my flip.
Oh, yeah.
That's one of the errors I wrote in. I was like, I'm pretty sure this is.
Oh, I, I missed that communication. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, that would be interesting.
I know. It would be fascinating to know what they're doing differently.
Exactly. Okay, so that's just a, that's just a map. That's just a clarifier.
So we'll stay on top of making sure the data is being kind of early and tied in, and we can deal with that on the agenda planning next time.
Yeah.
We get together on it. Any other future agenda items? Anything else that we need to?
Oh, um, Marina Richmond is gonna come to speak about the ELO grant. So that's one of the partners that you forgot tonight. But that is providing some of the after-school services.
Okay.
With that funding, so we'll have that for, um.
Could you schedule the lunch updates?
Um, yeah, we can have that as an update. Uh, we should have some more information by then, for sure.
Yeah, and I didn't want to belabor the point while Kirsten and everyone was here, but I'm not so sure as a public school, can we, I don't think we can accept just straight donations. I thought people had to donate through check. Can people just literally write a check to a school district?
Yeah, I'm aware of, I think that, I mean, I remember this, like, some school districts actually can quantify, if you go on vacation, your dollar amount that you would be.
Yeah, your ADA impact.
Yeah, no, it's pretty interesting. It's well.
Yeah.
Isn't it the same as field? I was thinking of it as a field trip.
The field trip, I feel like you're underwriting a cost, which I guess.
But that is what you're doing. So if someone was paying lunch before.
Right.
You're under, you're just basically saying, I pay the same as I was before and, uh, money be donated. It's not mandatory, but.
Nothing new to update on MAP. I always kind of keep that in the back of my mind, that we have new frameworks or whatever coming, but nothing's been, I don't think.
It's not changing anything.
Okay.
Um, I think, yeah.
For the next year. I think it would be a big deal. Well, you know what else? I got like, three other districts contacting me, asking like, do you have any? I was like, I didn't really think. Okay.
But we're not changing what we're doing. So I think they're, they may be going through a change.
Okay.
So that might be different. If we were changing, then maybe it might be a bigger issue for us.
Right. It's good.
So I don't know. I just want to be cognizant of like, it's March, and then April, the May meetings. I'm totally fine with us having board chop around it, but I just.
No, if there's no news, then it's up on it. That's gonna go on forever too.
Okay, anyway.
Anything else? Future agenda items? Okay. Uh, reports from trustees. Heather?
Okay, um, David, I'll let you do J-LAC.
Okay.
At the Action Day. Um, the SLAM parent event, is anyone else gonna talk about that? Great event. It was the first of four. And it sounds like you can join at any time, or is it supposed to be, okay, it's supposed to be in there. Yeah. Um, amazing. I think that's, you know, goes without saying in terms of, I think, all of the, um, and I love the fact that it's going to be a journey, not that it's a, who said this, the one and done? Tricia Beal said that. Um, D-LAC, is anyone else starting to talk to D-LAC? Maybe Raquel, did you want to bring up the D-LAC? I think that you did a great job soliciting feedback, um, as part of the LCAP. Um, at the end of the, the meeting, Raquel broke into groups and, um, solicited direct feedback. And I always find that those meetings, you get really honest, um, feedback, because I think it's done in a really targeted way. And it always starts out, I think, Raquel, you said this, everything's great. Students are great. And then like, five minutes in, it's like, well, actually. And you know, it's, you know, I think, I think you could probably say this too. It's always, you know, it's a little disheartening to hear, you know, you think, we, we are making all these great strides, but there's still very persistent issues, um, where families are not feeling part of our community, and there's students that, um, are not feeling as accepted. Um, which I think is, you know, it's, it's why we have those meetings. It's why we, we're doing the work we're doing. But it's, you know, it comes out year after year. I feel like that's the, um, very common feedback. Um, the only other thing I was gonna say is I went to last week, I didn't get to go to any third and fourth graders, but, um, I did get to go to the, um, three different, uh, times at school for the TED.
The only other thing I was gonna say is, I went to, last week, I didn't get to go to any third and fourth graders, but I did get to go to the three different times at school, for the TED Talk in eighth grade, that was invited, my eighth grader was presenting. And then with Ms. Libby and with the ELA and just overwhelmingly, just impressed with what is going on in our classrooms. And particularly with the students, their level of confidence and their poise, it's incredible. And I already talked about the principal chat. And that's it, I'll let you guys do the rest, and the basketball games have been, I think Ken, I mean, I think that Grant has alluded to this, they are packed. And it's just students going to cheer out other students, it's a really exciting world and tons of parents are going. So that's a really nice thing to see, and it's really nice to see boys cheering up girls, seeing the girls cheering up boys, which I don't used to see that, like, you know, but they really all come full force to cheer on each other, so.
Nice.
That's it.
Sarah?
Let's see, we had a policy committee meeting, which was good, I think we got ourselves set up for how to kind of move that forward, so we'll be bringing some policies to you guys soon. Look out. Yeah, that's part of April.
Wait, Sarah, how many are backlog? I just have this fear of, is it like a hundred?
No, it's not a hundred.
But it's not, not anywhere near that, right? Because I remember doing like ten or fifteen a meeting in my early days, and I keep thinking, we haven't had any policies for like.
We haven't had any for a while, no, there's probably. It hasn't been two years.
October of twenty, what year are we in? Twenty, twenty, October of twenty twenty-one, hasn't been two years.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we, we did them like six months ago, it's not that bad.
Okay, it wasn't as bad.
I mean, is, are there twenty or thirty probably? Anyway, we'll get through them, and then the only other thing, I had a kindergarten visit today, and I guess we got all the kindergarten classrooms, and it was so fun. And it was, it was really lovely to see, it was center's time, so lots of different small group things happening, paras, parent volunteers. It's that mathness month, so there was a lot of math activities that I was seeing and some ELA too, but, yeah, kids were super engaged and just, it was really lovely to see, so, it was a great visit. And I can't think, I don't think any of my other committees, not, not that I can remember.
I guess I'm next, I didn't have any visits with my grades, but we had J-LAC Action Day, which was all about pension buydowns, special ed, and don't expect anything for community funded schools.
Yeah.
Sort of getting this different from, I want a lot of funding, longer term funding stuff, it's getting sucked up by.
And teacher shortages.
Oh, teacher shortage, yeah.
It's not an issue in our district, but that was highlighted big time, Marin, how many was there? Marin had like. It was a lot, it was a lot across Marin.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
And then the LCAP stuff, I think that's been super productive and I was really glad to see such good presentations today, sort of bringing that document to life. I think that's so much better, Raquel, than it has been in the past, so thank you for that. Davina?
It's just D-LAC, so I can pass. Okay, a policy with Sarah, Casper negotiations, and then I also visited Barbara and Shannon's classroom. Oh, and I saw Raquel, I saw Raquel with Shannon, so it was nice.
Did I forget negotiations?
Oh, yeah, come on. Oh, yeah. Just that little thing.
And we have that little sub, stupid, though.
Yeah, and we did have our subcommittee meeting too.
Burton and dates?
Open houses are coming up.
Yeah.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that for you all? So in previous districts that I worked in, board members would, sometimes it'd be because of a bigger district, the board neck members would, it's like to go to. So you guys have, everybody has kids that can't except for ENE.
Right.
So do you guys divide and conquer, do you guys go to both?
I think we just make sure at least somebody's gonna be. But I am planning on going to both this time, because I do want to go to Basit just to check in, so I'll be there for both.
But you don't have to attend one, because I, like, what, if I do go, what do I do? Just walk around by myself?
Annie, you can come with my family.
One of us will adopt you.
Because I was planning to go, but I was like, it's weird because I don't have a kid.
Are you sure?
It's not a big deal, I used to go for years, yeah, a year, and you just walk around and you.
Bring your pearls, bring your pearls over and they can see what to look forward to.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I used to read mine too, especially all the electives that there are, I'll get them.
Okay, perfect.
Anything other on dates?
I think our handout, our date handout said open house eighth grade, isn't it? But I assume that it's for all.
Oh, yeah. Even for those music concerts, are we expected to go to those, the strings, those concerts?
You know, I want to, those are all on the calendar, I just want to confirm that they're all happening. And I heard Mike mention them at the enrichment, my cartoonist, he mentioned this in May, I think, May thirty-first and June first. So I just want to be sure that those are all truly happening, because I also feel like there are basic concerts that are on there, but I just, I want to confirm that they're up.
But now, especially we haven't always all gone to all, we've got some of that, and often the board's kind of trying to mix around and if he can't, then, you know, we want to, you know, like, we try and have board representation and everything, but we haven't all, all attended. Although graduations, we will all be at graduation, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else? Venus turn at eight thirty-eight.